So I am going to call the meeting to order. This is Oliver Olson, Chair of the State Board of Education. It's now 8:03 and I'm calling the meeting to order. So we have a fairly busy agenda. So first up Suzanne, I believe you're running today's meeting if you wouldn't mind calling the roll.
I'll be glad to. Patrick Brown.
Present. Present.
Kim Gleason.
Here, good morning.
Tammy Colby. Lyle Jepson. Tom Lovett.
Present.
Gabrielle Lucci.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Present.
Chair Olson.
Present.
Angelita Peña.
Present.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Good morning.
Here.
Secretary French.
Morning.
Excellent. And I, Mr. Jepson will not be with us today. I just remembered that. So are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. That takes us to item B on the agenda, which is public, public to be heard. Are there any members of the public who wish to, to be heard? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. It doesn't look like we have anybody else on the line. I will circle back just before 8:20 to see if anybody has joined us and we can pick up public comment. And then also, as we discussed at the last meeting, we'll try this as an experiment, see how it works out. But I did put in a sliver of time at the very end of the agenda. So if there are any members of the public who wish to offer any comment, there will be that second opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. But in the interest, since we do have a busy agenda, in the interest of time, I think we can hopefully pick up some time because I suspect we may find that some other items take a little bit more time than we had scheduled. So we'll move on to item C, which is to review and approve the meeting minutes from our March 16th meeting. Could I have a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Lovett and seconded by Samuelson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of our March 16th meeting, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
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 Okay. And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. I'm not seeing any. Are there any abstentions? Not seeing any. The motion appears to pass unanimously and the motion has carried unanimously. So we've adopted the minutes of our March 16th meeting. That brings us to item D, board announcements. Are there any board announcements, not otherwise on the agenda? Has everybody had their second cup of coffee yet? Already. Moving swiftly along. Item E, our student reports. So Angelita, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I'd love to. So this is around the time period when we have a lot of exams happening. So at least in my district, S-Back just happened about a month ago. I'm sure Gabrielle can relate, but we have AP exams coming up. And then if you have not taken SATs yet, we have SATs, SATs happen all year round. So I kind of want to touch on this because a lot of peers, at least peers that I've spoken to and myself, believe that these types of exams are not representative of our learning and ourselves as students in general. So if you've taken the exam, and I'm sure they have changed over the years, it is when we sit for four hours, three hours in the morning and just take these tests. And the same with AP, but APs are more direct to a specific course. These are not representative at all in that sense because first of all, they're timed. They require us to sit in the morning for long periods of time. And that is very hard for a lot of students. And memorization of things that you probably learned three years ago, depending on what pace you're going in school, just isn't very accurate. Especially since I know there are a lot of peers that struggle with reading. They read at a slower rate than I myself might read. And so that kind of doesn't allow them to read through the questions as thoroughly as they might need to in order to answer the questions correctly. And I know S-Backs, they're, just over, just exams in general are extremely painful, both mentally and physically. I went to the dentist about a year ago, as one should. And I struggle with dentist teeth. And one of the first things they ask you are, is do you grind or clench your teeth? And he said that around towards the end of the year, he sees a lot of students on average saying that they suffer from tooth pain. And he says that this happens from very stressful environments. And he says it's most common during exam season. So he is seeing a lot of students clenching and grinding their teeth. Oh, I don't know why my voice decided to do this. So not only is the stress of an exam happening mentally, but we're also seeing physical examples of it that might not be noticeable to the student themselves, but it's happening in general. So just a really fast tidbit. I could go on for hours about this, but I'm trying to sum it up as quickly as I can. I understand that this issue is not going to get fixed probably within the next decade. But it is very interesting to see how exams are changing and how they are trying to mold to better fit students. And it is a little frustrating when I am trying to show colleges myself as a student and trying to portray myself and show that I am a good learner. But it is also frustrating when I read an SAT book and the SAT book itself says that the test is meant to trick me into trying to get the answer wrong or really thoroughly thinking through it. And I just don't feel that that is very helpful in a sense. Like in the real world, we are not being tricked into diagnosing someone with the wrong disease. Like no, we have resources, we have peers. And I understand that in some classes, we do need to know the fundamentals. So memorization is important. But I think that there are better ways to be identifying and seeing where students are and how well they learn. So just that little, just the gist. I was like, it's, this is a good time to talk about it because this is when all the students are stressing about APs and such. So just a kind of insight into what is probably going on for a lot of students right now.
Angelita, which AP exams are you taking?
Oh, I am taking AP Calculus and AP Biology.
Those are not easy.
They're not. AP Calculus is the hardest AP in our class. And I used to be good at math, but it has definitely served to be incredibly difficult, especially since some schools cannot afford to kind of, in the, there's also that sense, they cannot either afford the resources to teach students these classes because it's supposed to be pre-calculus, calculus and AP calculus. But I went straight from pre-calculus to AP calculus because of the low numbers we have and the lack of resources my school has. So it is very frustrating, but you know, working hard, trying to make it through. But it definitely is stressful.
Wonderful. Gabrielle.
All right. I don't think there's really much for me to report aside from, I'm going to bounce off a little bit of what Angelita's saying about exam season. For our school or my district, we haven't really gotten into the thick of exam season yet. AP exams are rapidly approaching though. And S-Backs were taken last week by some younger students. And then next week, which is the week we get back from our spring break, some older students, including my grade, are going to be taking them, which is definitely a little nerve wracking because I've never taken an S-Back before. I came from a private school, a Catholic school, to my high school, which is a public school. And I had never really heard of S-Backs. We'd taken a different kind of standardized testing. And I think it's definitely nerve wracking, not only for the S-Backs, but for the SATs. Because when I came to high school from elementary, middle school, there were a lot of concepts in math especially, that I had never seen before. And it really worried me because I wondered how that might affect my chances of getting into a college that I was interested in because I had never seen these concepts before. And I've definitely been more exposed to them now with a certain public school curriculum. But it's still a little nerve wracking with the SAT because certain concepts I may not feel as confident in could dictate how well I do on the test and how schools may look at my applications, which is certainly a scary thing to think about. And I wonder with all of these changes that we're seeing. For example, I had just ordered a SAT prep book and it's, it's a pretty thick book. I was, I would estimate it's a little over a thousand pages. And my parents looked at it and they're like, wow, this has certainly gotten a lot bigger since we took the test. And I'm noticing that maybe with these changes, we could perhaps adapt to the test. Like like Angelita said, we're probably not going to be able to make any drastic or groundbreaking changes to the test to better meet the overall student needs within the next few years or the next decade. But I wonder if we could adapt to the way the test works now and provide more resources for students to be able to perform well on the test. I don't know how that could appear because I know there are SAT prep courses and certain high school curriculum is designed to sort of prepare you for the SAT. But I wonder what other resources we could give students to ensure that they do their absolute best on the test. So that's all I really have to say, but thank you.
Great, thank you. Patrick, you have a question?
Not a question, but a comment. As I listen to both of our student reps talk about preparing for their tests and exams, and without a doubt, I am sure you will both do great. And wishing you best of luck as you continue to excel. Thank you.
Wonderful. Tom? Oh, and, oh, Angelita, did you want to respond to that?
Um, no, but I had a comment about the SAT, so I can go after Tom.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a comment, maybe a couple of comments and then a question. My comment is that those of us who've been around Vermont education for decades, remember when standardized testing was not the way that we assess student performance, especially in language arts and math, that we had a portfolio system that was more adaptable to different kinds of learners than a standardized test. And that portfolio or longitudinal kind of assessment actually has quite a few benefits. It's just harder and maybe more expensive, but I do, I do like that. Not that standardized testing doesn't have its place. It just, it has a prominence now that it didn't have before. I guess my question is for both Angelita and Gabrielle, how your, your courses assess your learning at the end of courses? Or how your schools assess your overall learning at the end of your, your course of study there? Is there anything that we could learn from the way that your best courses assess your learning? Because I would hate to have us design our curriculum to meet the demands of some outside standardized test rather than what we know is best about teaching and learning from the student experience and the teacher experience. So I'm wondering how your schools or your best courses assess your learning?
So for my school, I find that the best assessments happen when it is very team based or it is very independent learner based. So I, a lot of my English or social studies courses is very, you know, create a project that summarizes what you have done so far. And I know for my AP Biology class, she has us doing a project where we can pick any topic that we did. And we're basically going to reteach the class on that topic. So it is kind of us going back to what we did. And we are either going to be teaching our peers what we had already learned and adding on to that. And/or our peers will be teaching us, which I think is really fun because you know, I would love to talk about cancer cells and how cells reproduce and terminate themselves. And I would also love to hear a peer tell me new facts about something like that. So I think the best assessments are when we can kind of bring it back to reality is when we are working with peers and using our, in a sense, open notes to kind of go back on what we have learned. I hope I answered your question. That's for me at least. I don't know if it's different for Gabrielle. But that's, that's the best kind of assessments. And I understand you can't do that for every single course. But it is very fun and it is very, very helpful when that is how we are kind of assessed at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Gabrielle?
Um, I think for me, it's a little bit different depending on the course that you take, how they assess you at the end of the term, semester, year, whatever it may be. I'm not entirely sure what I would say is the best sort of assessment for myself because there's such a variety. I think it definitely depends on the subject and how confident I am in the subject material. But I do know that I can find myself doing well sometimes with projects. I remember in ninth grade English, we had to do a project based on a book that we were reading at the end of the year. And I remember I had a lot of fun with the project because I related certain songs in music to the book that we were reading and what it could have represented in symbols and plot lines and things. And I remember having a lot of fun with that project. And my English teacher was really impressed by the project. And I earned a very high grade and he said how I, it showed I grasped a clear understanding of the book. And I was just happy to have gotten the best grade that I could and had fun with the project. I know a lot of other kids in my class had fun with that sort of project, but I know that sometimes projects can be extremely time consuming. I know that project took me hours and hours because I wanted it to be as perfect as possible. But yeah, I just, I think it really varies from student to student and class to class. But that's just one thing that I enjoyed and had fun doing. And it worked out for the best for me. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, great, thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions for our student members? Patrick, if you could take your hand down and be wonderful. And so this time it's 8:22. We're, we are a little ahead of schedule and I noticed some other folks joined the call. So I do want to see if there are any members of the public who dialed in with the intention of offering some public comment. So if you're a member of the public and you wish to address the board, if you could announce yourself. Otherwise, we'll, we'll move on. I'm not hearing anybody. I do, there are some folks dialed in who are not muted. So unless you wanted to offer public comment now, I would ask that you mute yourself. And Suzanne, if you would, I'm muting the non-board members, that would be helpful. Just to minimize background noise. So we have, next on the agenda is our discussion with Lincoln. I'm going to hold off on that. And then we have our Act One presentation. So I think probably what we could do, Dan, if you're prepared, perhaps we can pick up item J, which is an update on the waiting study. And we could cover that off now.
Yeah, sure.
Unless Tammy, unless Tammy wants to address that one.
I would certainly defer to her in this regard, but I'll just
Just Oliver.
Provide just, I don't, I don't know to what extent the board is interested in the sort of blow by blow on this. But obviously firstly, good morning. Again, this is a very complex policy. This gets to revision of our education funding system. There was a report commissioned largely under our special ed reform policy of Act 73 or 173 in 2018. Dr. Colby led that research with her team at UVM and others from around the country. Ultimately, that culminated in some recommendations that the pupil weights in the funding system be revised. The legislature last session formed a task force to review how to implement those suggested changes that resulted in a couple of different options. And they're in the process of evaluating those two options right now essentially. Though I understand today they're focused on primarily looking at implementation of the weights. Been involved, there's, that's a very, you know, quick simplification of what has been a very complex policy review, but also very complex policy deliberations in the General Assembly. Be happy to discuss this in more detail or invite Dr. Colby to chime in if she'd like.
I will, I will echo the complexity, but I also might point out that in the context of those revisions, there also has been, at least in the Senate bill that went to the House, there has been some language that would direct the board to contemplate some changes in rules with respect to school board and local governance. And I know that's something we all have talked about here in the past. And so I think in addition to changing the fundamental underlying structure around how we equalize, how we equalize resources across districts in the state, the legislation that comes out may also direct the state board to give some consideration in the context of the EQS to putting in some new kinds of guidelines and policies and with respect to local educational governance. Dan, do you want to add anything? I know Dan has testified to that as well, as well as some quality assurance standards. So I just wanted to, there's, there's the funding piece, but there are some things that are sort of, that have hitched to that wagon that I think have implications both for the board's work, but also touch on some of the issues that have been important to our discussions recently. So Dan, do you, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just say the
Oh, sorry, Dan, before you touch on that one, I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing because there was, and it's very, as you know, it's a very fluid situation and very fast moving. But there was some discussion as part of, one of their two miscellaneous ed bills moving right now. One of the bills, there was some discussion about the notion of education district standards, not to be confused with education quality standards. And Tammy, my question for you, just to clarify one, are you speaking to what's been characterized as the education district standards?
Yes.
Okay.
Dan, is that your understanding? It is, I will say, it's a pretty fluid situation. And right now, in fact, they're going to be taking up the bill again this afternoon in Ways and Means. So that was my last understanding. Dan, is that consistent with yours?
Yeah, just, you know, sort of on a high level, the question very early on, actually, when the waiting report was presented to the General Assembly, questions were raised, you know, around this issue, you know, just because a district, let's say, receives additional pupil weights, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're, they're going to be inclined to spend the money that's available due to increased taxing capacity. So the question emerged about, you know, what, what assurance could be provided? Or what are the regulatory approaches that would be necessary to do that? And this led to some interest in the idea of looking at the quality standards, which the board is familiar with, but also in this new topic essentially of school district quality centers, which would get into a lot of the operational things like budgets, facilities, governance, some of the other inputs that we really don't have standards on right now. So as to Tammy's point, at one point, this was embedded as part of the bill. To Oliver's point, it's being chopped up and spread around in different places. But it is a theme that's been developed early on in the testimony, going back a couple of years, and it's still very much alive.
Members of the public, we have several people who are on, which is great. But if you could please mute yourself and turn your video off until we, we get to your particular section, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to discuss this in more detail.
So I think there's, so I think perhaps there, there may be three different places where some of this is floating because, because there's a, there's a miscellaneous education bill that originated in the Senate that is now somewhere in the House. I think it's in House Education. Then there's a House Education miscellaneous bill that's now in Senate Education. And then there's the waiting, the so-called waiting bill, which is in Ways and Means now. But, so I was called to testify a few days ago in Senate Education on the House, that's H 616, 716, if I'm not mistaken. And there was this notion of the education district standards. And literally I was, it, 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 I only saw draft of the, of the bill five minutes before I was called to testify. So I was a little, I was a little confused. But now I'm hearing that there may be other pieces of this in the waiting bill.
I believe that will be the case. I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
No, you're right. I mean, it's, it's been chopped up. There's pieces around positions for the agency as well that have been chopped up and put in different places and are still moving around. So it is, I would just point out, these are concepts that were introduced earlier on. And I don't think their final home has been found yet. But in the last week or so, a lot of the conversation was around two different models of doing the weights. But to your point, there are other pieces of this initiative that have to be brought together for the final product. And it's, it's a very dynamic situation right now.
Mr. Fership, if you wouldn't mind turning your video off. You can stay on, but if you could just turn your video off, that would be helpful. Mr. Lovett?
Yeah, if you, Dan, if you could just give a high level summary of what those two models are?
Sure. The waiting study itself recommended revisions to the pupil weight. So I can describe that in more detail. But, you know, we have like most states, a process where we figure out that different types of students cost more to educate and that is represented in an equalization waiting essentially of students. So that's, that, that is one of the models. And, you know, again, the study recommended revisions to those. The other model was sort of to take that, I'll call it cost factor payments. Its name has changed a couple of times, but it was to take sort of the, those waiting ratios and translate them into actual dollars that would go to districts. Districts would still have education spending, but they would receive these additional cost factor payments or adjustments as additional local revenues essentially. And those cost factor payments would be associated or calibrated based on proportional weights or different types of student class.
Thank you.
The key issue, Tom, is whether or not we're, whether or not we're going to use dollars to adjust education spending proportionally or whether or not we're going to send fixed grant amounts out to districts statewide to offset costs. Right, that's really, right, like that's the, the two fundamentally different approaches. And I think the core issue is given our local control system, right? Because most states operate a system where we have a foundation and a stable base, right? And then we adjust from there, we don't. And so I think that the right, the sort of the core decision point is which And so I think that the right, the sort of the core decision point is which of those approaches, the proportional adjustment to education spending or sending a fixed dollar grant per pupil out, um, for particular cost categories, which, which of those approaches most appropriately adjusts for differences in cost, equalize educational opportunities across districts in the state. So there are two approaches that, and to adjusting for differences in costs outside district control. And they do it, they do it in fundamentally different ways. And so the real debate has been around which of those approaches is most appropriate in the context of our existing formula, which prioritizes local control for making spending decisions. Is, is that helpful, Tom?
Yes, it is. It's very helpful.
And I'm happy if you want to talk offline.
Okay.
So, so Dan and, and or Tammy, based on, and I know, realize it's a fluid situation, but as you see all of this coming together, um, where do you see sort of the, um, the board's role and, and where all of this lands? Is it, is it just these education district quality standards? Or is it potentially something else? And, um, what do you, what do you see our role shaping up to be based on, on your observations?
Yeah, I don't know yet, honestly. Um, I think it would be premature. I mean, I could talk about the individual pieces that have been, um, brought forward as a result of this, but I'm not sure which pieces will ultimately survive, uh, the process in it. As we were just describing, these sort of two, um, models, it's been challenging, uh, for us on a technical standpoint, we're, we're anxious to weigh in and help refine whichever model is ultimately chosen to bring forward. But we haven't been as interested in like building out technical modeling for both models simultaneously. So, there's pieces of this that still have to come together. I think if you were to ask me that question next week at this time, I'd be able to answer it more directly. I think it's, we're, we're at a, I would say not a fragile moment, but a very dynamic moment in the process, and it's not clear to me yet how this is all going to come together. Um, I, I have, I'm confident, I think that today we'll see some action on, uh, sort of the model, um, choice, if you will, but there's other parts of this that need to be, uh, brought in. On Thursday, I'm testifying and appropriate house appropriations on, uh, positions that were at one point associated with, uh, these processes. And there's a connection between this initiative and universal school meals. There's a new process by which we would determine household income. To get away from free and reduced lunch is sort of a proxy indicator of income. So there's some pieces that still need to be brought together that are still fairly technical. And, uh, I think, you know, next week I'd know a little better what the implications for the board, um, would be. But I, I don't think they're significant, honestly. I think it's, if there's any implication, it's around some of the rulemaking work. That would probably be useful at the end of the session, sort of just to take stock of all the different rule, potential rulemaking initiatives and work out a work plan, uh, to schedule that work.
That, that's helpful. And I, I just wanted to surface that for the board, uh, because as I mentioned, it is a very fluid situation. I get, you know, I'm likely to be called in to testify and, and opine on something, and I'm always sort of reluctant to offer, uh, a, a specific opinion of, on something that we as a board have, have not really discussed. So I always have to offer those caveats. So, you know, unless, unless there are objections or concerns, uh, from, from folks on the board, I, I think, um, you know, it's, you know, my, my comments on any potential rulemaking will be, um, you know, somewhat neutral from a policy perspective and, and more focused on, you know, logistics and timing. And, uh, I'm always a little bit cautious. There's a tendency to, um, set deadlines that sometimes are overly optimistic or, or aggressive. Uh, so I have a tendency when I do get called into that position to try to temper those expectations and, and, and move the deadlines out. So thoughts on that? Tammy, is your hands up?
The one thing I would say, and I'm wearing my board of education hat here, is that I, I know as a group, we have, and we're going to hear again today from the act one group. There's a lot of conversation about, um, how English language learners might be treated in the formula and what that might mean programmatically. Right? And I think, again, as, as Secretary French says, it's a very dynamic policy situation and it's unclear what that might look like. But I, I would say that I, as a board member, I have a lot of interest in making sure that whatever solution is, is developed in this process is one that's equitable for English language learners and students of color. Um, and, you know, those students are primarily located in a few districts in our state. And so if we're asked for commentary, I think, um, I would also like, perhaps maybe you would stress that that would be something that the board, a priority for the board is to keep that front and center in the conversation. Um, in terms of equitable opportunities for students to learn, and that would be all students. And to make sure that that, that as opposed to some of these technical things that get talked about out here, which I get to talk about in other circles. But, you know, I want to make sure that we're really keeping, from my perspective, what is most important. And, and then that is a student-focused, student-centered perspective on the decisions that are making particularly for our English language learners.
Well, that, that's a great point. Is any, is everybody sort of kind of consensus around that as a, as a theme?
And I, I, I would add, I would add that, um, the, the students, um, coming from, um, backgrounds of poverty, um, in the same boat. And, um, especially in rural areas of our state.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm hearing poverty, um, language and
Well, I think all of the cost factors are important, which are sparsity and poverty and ELL. They're all important. There, there have been separate distinct discussions around whether to treat ELL as a program versus a cost adjustment and what these, what if it was a program that might would look like, including agency staff and different, different kinds of definitions and things along those lines. And whether or not to wait for ELL or not wait for ELL. And those are, there are lots of different policy options before lawmakers. Um, I'm not endorsing one, but I do think that is, that if, if we're asked, it would be great to remind policymakers that the priority, that we should keep a student focus, student-centered focus as opposed to thinking, as opposed to a technical solution focus and really be thinking about how in a state like Vermont, where we have some unique challenges around serving English language learners, both in terms of we have, we have scale issues in some parts of the state. We have a very diverse population of ELL learners and our refugee population in Burlington. And all I'm suggesting is that if it comes up, it would be great to remind, um, policymakers to really take those contingencies into account and keep a student focus on what's best for kids, um, as opposed to just trying to find an elegant tel- technical finance solution.
Yep. Great points. Uh, so Kim and then Patrick, but before I go there, so we're at eight forty-one. I'd like to wrap up this discussion at eight forty-five and then we can transition over to, uh, to Lincoln. So, so Kim and then Patrick.
Thank you. Um, and then this is not specific to ELL learners, but I think more broadly the policy positions or, um, reflection of state board position on things. And I'm grateful, Oliver, you've been all over the place. So thank you. In responding to all that is happening in this no new initiative session. So I was thinking about one and I can't recall the, the bill. But I believe Senator Tarzanini may have brought it forward regarding Holocaust.
Holocaust, yes, yes.
Think, um, importantly is I thought about that and listened to it, and I don't know where it sits now. It began very prescriptive and it seems that, um, I would, I, it would seem beneficial to not have legislation be, um, more prescriptive in a particular area than that, than what would make sense in the context of the full scope of the education quality standards, for instance. So, um, you know, I don't, I'm not sure how others feel about that, but it felt out of sync with the other, um, requirements in law that direct the work around education quality standards. And I know that will be our work, so I thought I would pipe in on that.
Yeah, that, that, that's a great, that's a, that's a good point. And I think, um, that, uh, that was one they had asked for our input on it. I reminded them that we had the work of the act one group coming before us and we were opening up at quality standards, which is my way of saying, hey, listen, before you direct us to start new rulemaking, we have some rulemaking, we're about to open up this rulemaking. So if we could sort of widen, I think it's more, I see it as more sort of widening the lens, um, and, and providing less prescription and sort of broader, sort of broaden the framework, i- if you will, for the work that we're going to do with the, does that make sense? Okay, excellent. Uh, Patrick.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, um, Chair Olson, Professor Colby, this is a very important agenda item. And I would like to make a special request that we keep this on the agenda for the next meeting for any, um, new developments or follow-up. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, Secretary, um, French, are you good with that? I think hopefully at our next meeting, we'll, we'll have some resolution of the competing proposals.
Yeah, sure.
Yep. Uh, and I think actually we could probably, it would probably, assuming that we do have resolution by our next meeting, it, um, I think it's, um, it's a pretty weighty topic. So I think it would be helpful for the board to really have a kind of a waiting 101, if you will, on, on what passed it and how it's, how it's going to work and what it means for us. So, and, and our students. Okay. Great, great suggestion. Okay, so we're now at eight forty-four. Um, I think it's a good time, uh, to transition to, back to our, let me pull my schedule here. Uh, item, it's item F, our discussion with Ripton, and I did see a number of folks, from Lincoln join us. Uh, so Paul, you're the, uh, the person I've had the pleasure of interacting with most. So I'm, I'm going to consider you the, the chief, uh, spokesperson, uh, for, uh, the petitioners, uh, from Lincoln on this withdrawal request. I understand you have some other, uh, other folks, uh, joining you as well. And, uh, we'll certainly provide them the opportunity to join you in, in your presentation. For everybody's benefit, I, I did ask, um, Donna Russo Savage to prepare a, a legal memo for the board, which I've also shared with Mr., uh, Forlenza, that outlines what's being asked of the board, what our role is in this process, uh, some of the issues, uh, some of the challenges, um, we have, um, with the current law. One of the challenges that's, that we're presented with at this very instant is that there is no, there is no process articulated in law to, um, designate spokespeople, if you will, for these efforts. So we as a board have established, um, a practice of winging it, um, for, for lack of a better way to put it. And, and it, uh, generally speaking, we're looking for some folks who kind of ri- rise to the challenge from those local communities. And Mr. Forlenza, you certainly, um, have done a good job, um, sort of organizing everything and preparing materials and presenting to the board. So what I, what I propose to do for today's meeting is to provide, uh, Mr. Forlenza and his colleagues an opportunity to provide the, the, uh, the board with a high-level overview of, of, uh, of the request, uh, for the withdrawal, uh, where things stand today. In a, I'm suggesting maybe ten, fifteen minutes at most, and then let's reserve the rest of the time for questions from the board and, and some interaction. Uh, the idea is that today's meeting is really an introductory one to get to understand the landscape and what's going on. And then, um, we will take it from there and, and sort of, uh, identify, uh, the path forward based on, uh, what we hear today and some of the questions that come up. So, Mr. Forlenza, the, uh, the floor is yours. And perhaps if you could introduce the other, other folks who are, who are joining you. I see other folks on the screen, but I'm not exactly sure who's, who's who in the zoo.
Sure. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm Paul Forlenza. I'm on the Lincoln Select Board and I'm also the, uh, Select Board liaison to the Save Community Schools. And that is the group that's really been advocating and taking us through this process of withdrawal. With me is, uh, Jeannie Albert. And, uh, she, you should be able to see her. Jim Warnock, uh, is with us. He'll be, he, his camera isn't quite working, so he's going to be talking to you, talking to you, uh, with audio. We also have, uh, Tori Riley, who is the principal of the Lincoln School. And we have Andrew Fersch, uh, who's part of our team. So if you don't mind, uh, Chair Olson, I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, can you all hear me? Chair Olson? Great. Excellent. Uh, I'm sorry that it, I'm sorry that I don't have any video available for you. Uh, for some reason, my camera seems to be malfunctioning. It's great on here and, uh, really
I don't know if it's just me, but your audio is coming in now.
Okay, uh, hold on. Does that sound better?
That's, uh, maybe, but there's an echo now.
So
I think you have two lines dialed in at once because we're hearing an echo.
You're hearing an echo? Are you, you are? Let me try this one more.
You guys are both in the same room, I think. Okay.
Oh, boy.
If you're in the same room, would all change places maybe?
You have changed places? Okay.
Yep, I think that might solve the issue.
And I think probably one, the other turn off or turn off, um, mute the other. Okay.
I see what's happening. So, so, um, so, so Jim, the, the, the microphone on Paul's computer is muted. The other one is not.
I think, I think we're a pretty good shape now.
No, no, no. You, you need to unmute. Paul, Paul's computer needs to be unmuted. And your computer needs to be muted.
Is that better?
I think that's better. Yep.
And let me just, this one off. Let, let me just turn this up. Let me just do this. There. Okay, shut that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks so much for your patience, folks. Some, uh, technical difficulties. We're kind of, uh,
Thank you.
Kind of a Zoom crew over here. Um, so I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. And, uh, I also wanted to extend the thanks to you, Chair Olson, and also to, uh, Donna Russo Savage, um, for your correspondence in advance of this meeting. It's very helpful to us in preparing. And I hope we'll be, um, spot on in acknowledging that the primary purpose here is to provide any information you may need to fulfill your legislative charge to make a determination if Lincoln's affiliation with the MAUSD district can in fact be terminated. If it can be demonstrated and you guys believe that in fact we can provide education for Lincoln students in schools that meet EQS standards. And we recognize also, we're not simply talking about the elementary students, Lincoln Community School, but that in fact, we're talking about secondary students who would be tuitioned as well. We submitted a report to you, um, on April 11th, and, uh, I'm going to highlight just certain sections of it. That we think would
Sorry, one second. There's somebody dialed in with a phone number ending nine, two. Um, but thank you. Let's get them muted. Anybody from the public who's not with us from Lincoln, please mute yourself. And Suzanne, if you could do me a favor and try to mute everybody, that would be helpful.
Great.
Sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
No, no problem at all. Um, so in, in, um, our report, um, in the early pages, pages three to four, we do provide you with a history, um, of our efforts over the past nineteen months. And, uh, you'll find all the information there regarding the town votes and the ratification from the other towns. And I do want to acknowledge, uh, and assure you folks as a board, that we are keenly aware of the fact that our enthusiasm, um, in this mission and the overwhelming support we received here in town and from the other four towns does not constitute sufficient grounds for you to make a decision. We understand that. And Donna Russo Savage And Donna Russo Savage's memo was very helpful in clarifying that for us. So just wanted to assure you that we're keenly aware of that. We provide you on pages four and five of the report with some information on the school and on the staffing. And wanted to give you a picture of the school and to assure you again that not only is it an EQS-compliant school, but that we have full intentions of maintaining that compliance moving forward. The impact of Lincoln's withdrawal on Lincoln voters and voters in the other four towns is highlighted actually in some depth on pages six and eight of the report. And you'll note there is no undue hardship in terms of the tax rate, either in Lincoln or in the other four towns, Bristol, Moncton, New Haven, and Starksboro, as a result of our withdrawal. And we suspect you'll have some questions about that. Jeannie Albert has been our primary financial analyst. She'll be prepared to answer questions around that. And we do also want to publicly acknowledge and thank the MAUSD administration and the business office for their willing support and cooperation and helping us to generate this information. Pages eight and nine is where you're going to find information about current tuition rates announced at the area high schools and middle schools. We do have documentation we're prepared to share with you that responds to questions regarding the availability of space for secondary students. And so we have that information as well. And we recognize that there may be variations in overcharges, undercharges of tuition. We perceive it as a manageable uncertainty. And which kind of leads me to really the next section of the report. And it's something that has popped up in some of the correspondence that we received from Donna Russo Savage, which is our plans and preparation for providing SU services. Pages nine and 10 of the report, you'll find a documentation to date of our efforts in working with Ripton to model the feasibility of a joint SU. And I suspect you'll have questions about that, and we're more than prepared to respond to those in a straightforward fashion. And I would add also, folks, in deference to your expertise and your perspective from where you sit, that the questions you may ask that we can't answer are going to be important for us in continuing our research and preparation and moving forward. So we're really going to appreciate any questions you might have that are particularly challenging for us. In terms of key questions, and again, a shout out to Donna Russo Savage for framing these questions for us, you'll find on pages 12 through 14, our responses to questions specifically around staffing. If staff members currently working in Lincoln have seniority in the district, do they plan to stay in Lincoln or do they plan to ask to be reassigned? If the new district, should we receive conditional and then eventual complete approval? If they, if the new district intends to employ staff members currently work, what are the plans for ending the contracts? And again, we have some information in the report in terms of our analysis of the current master contracts and master agreements that exist in Addison Central Supervisory District, which is where Ripton has resided, and in the Mount Abe Unified School District. And that analysis has been helpful for us in beginning to model what a master agreement might look like in a newly-formed SU. We can certainly respond to questions around that as well. The EQS areas that, that Donna Russo Savage particularly highlights in her memo to you folks, which is on page four of her memo. And of all the EQS standards that could be referenced, she does indicate those of significant import would be school leadership staffing and support services, instructional practices and curriculum leadership, educational materials in school facilities, and access to current technology. And those were in fact the areas that we specifically targeted in preparing this report for you. So we have some very, very succinct and I think straightforward responses to how we will be responding moving forward in meeting and complying with these EQS standards. We conclude the report with a discussion of our work to date in envisioning an exit agreement. And again, we're extremely mindful of the fact that we cannot pursue that in any way, shape, or form until we receive conditional approval from you folks, at which time we can constitute and elect a local school board and then proceed forward. And I would also add with, add, folks, that we have been very, very respectful of the fact that there are certain decisions that we, as a community-based group, cannot make that can only be made by a duly-elected school board. For instance, we've had community members ask us, why don't we just designate Mount Abraham as the high school that students from Lincoln Community School will attend, both for middle and for high school education? And again, we've had to defer and say, that is a decision that the newly-constituted board would have to make. We do not have that authority. So we're very mindful. And I think Chair Olson, you've pointed this out in your analysis of some of the laws of current statute, is that there is no locus of responsibility that has any statutory basis. So we're keenly aware of that as well. So I don't know if that was roughly 10 or 15 minutes, but that, as Andy Warhol once said, "In the future, we'll all be famous for 15 minutes." So that was my 15 minutes of fame. But we do want to open it up to questions from all of you. And Paul, if you want to jump in here with me, or, okay.
Now, thanks. That was a really succinct presentation. Appreciate that. Questions from members of the board. Kim, you look like you're looking for your hint.
I was. Thank you. I, so I have a number of questions, partially because part of this is not able to be worked on in, in the absence of a board in this situation, the chicken and the egg problem. But I also think that among the thoughts that we had inquired when we were going through this with Ripton was to the extent, if this were not able to be operational at this scale for, to meet the full set of expectations regarding services for special education and transportation and otherwise, what, and, and should at some point in the future need to be closed, where is the next closest elementary school that students, public elementary school that students would attend? Geographically, what is the distance?
Okay. Jeannie, do you want to respond to that? This is Jeannie Albert.
Good morning. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
If there's an echo, I'm going to ask my colleagues to, to mute. Thank you. Apologize for the technical difficulties earlier. So thank you for that question. And we have, we have thought about this in our communications with Chair Olson and Donna Russo Savage. This question was raised, that is, that it would be important for us to have considered, even though we intend only to be tuitioning in grade seven to 12, we understand that your decision.
Paul and Jim, would you mind muting your line because we are picking up an act? Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Try again. This, Dr. Albert.
Sorry about that. And we, we actually have contacted the superintendents in the nearest districts to Lincoln. Probably the closest is in Bristol, the elementary school in Bristol, which is around maybe nine miles, 10 miles from Lincoln. But we've, we actually have contacted the superintendent. So that would be Superintendent Rehn. So the district we're currently in, the Mount Abraham Unified School District. We also contacted other superintendents in the region, both part of our outreach regarding tuitioning for secondary students, but also I did follow up with them about elementary school students as well. And so we did hear from, for example, Superintendent Burrows in the Addison Central School District. And he also confirmed that they would have capacity to accept all of our elementary school students if it turned, if it turned out that Lincoln was unable to educate them here. So we have those confirmations. We're happy to share them with you. A little bit farther, we also contacted Superintendent Sewell in the Addison Northwest School District. So we have all of that information that I, that if that's important for you, we can send to you and also ask the superintendents if it's, if you'd prefer to have something, you know, more official. We could have them send something to you.
Um, I was just interested in geographic distance in that particular question. It looks to me like it's six miles when I look, but I mean, you guys know the area better than I do in 12 minutes. So that was just, and I think important to consider as I look at the enrollment numbers. And I'm wondering if you can offer some information regarding demographics to have a better understanding of how it would be sustainable with class sizes of seven in the youngest grades.
One moment. Tori, are you available to speak? I think I can see your hand raised.
Yeah. Yeah. Good morning, everyone. So what we've traditionally done over the past 30 years that I've been at the Lincoln Community School is combine grades. We have a strong tradition of multi-age education in our school. So we, when I look, when I look ahead for the next three to five years, we would just be combining grades as we traditionally have. So even if there's a straight grade of seven or 10 students, we combine that with another grade to make a class size that would be an average of 16 to 20 students per classroom. And we are projecting having four classrooms for the foreseeable future. I always, I only project out five years because that's really what is reliable for, for incoming students. So that's what I've done for the next five years.
I, I think a concern I have is looking at the declining enrollment. If you were to look at the sixth grade enrollment of 19 and the decline over the years, down to K and, and first at seven. I, I don't know if people are moving in or out. I, I'm concerned about the sustainability and thinking about, I think it's different licensure at sixth grade than K5. So I don't know how that works in meeting common core standards for each of the grade levels.
So what I've done for the 19 years as principal is I've done what's called a survival rate. And it's a projection that is based on births in a town. And then how many of those students quote unquote survive to kindergarten? Obviously, they, most of the don't perish, thankfully. And it's an incredibly reliable projection. So even though we've had a number of years of birth rates which are low, and as you're, as you're noting, a larger exiting sixth grade class, next year is projected to be the lowest enrollment in the, or now, two years from now is projected to be the lowest in the low to mid 60s. And you're right, that does change with people moving in and out and so forth. But the, the, the way that survival rate is figured really takes into account moving in and, you know, families moving in and out. So in two years, we start leveling out, and then the birth rate increases after that. So I'm not projecting that the school will be getting smaller, even though you're right that when a large sixth grade leaves for a few years in a row and there's a smaller kindergarten enrollment, it really does impact the overall enrollment. And that's what we've been seeing. And I, I don't, Secretary French, I'm sure, could speak more to the endorsement of K5 or K6, but, but I believe it's still a K6 endorsement. So we would be fine in terms of teachers being licensed for those grades.
I see Jenna nodding her head. Yes.
Yeah, I think, knew I wasn't the expert in the room on that. I just was, I was concerned about the multi grades and the ability to hit the standards, the common core standards at each of the discrete grade levels, particularly if the fluidity of which grades are partnered based on the size of the classes coming and going are dictating what grades are with whom and how do you ensure then that as they flow through pre-K6, they've come through all standards at each grade level? That doesn't seem obvious to me as I look at that and those sets of enrollment numbers and their evolution through the process.
So I can, I can speak to that a little bit. The, the way that we have our grades configured is that the fifth and sixth grades have been together for a few decades, as has the third and fourth grade. And the fluidity that we've been working with is with the K1, two. So we, we look at the K1, two a little bit more as a whole team. And our preference is to have a straight kindergarten and the first and second grade paired together because in terms of curriculum and readiness for learning in school, that seems to work better. Although we do have a K1 right now, and there are tremendous advantages to that as well. So the way that we, the way that we loop our curriculum is on a two-year cycle. And we, we, we really just are flexible. And as Chair Olson used the phrase earlier, winging it, I would say that we, we, we wing it with great experience and with intention and a very deep understanding of the curriculum and how it can work over those three early years.
So, so I have a few questions, just, and let me just, just an observation. So I think, I mean, and first of all, I appreciate the level, the amount of work that everybody's put into this and the, the level of detail that, that has been presented. I think this is definitely a lot more than some, some other presentations that we've seen on this, this topic. This, I think you all appreciate that this particular type of withdrawal, specifically a withdrawal from a supervisory district, carries with it much greater complexity than some of the other withdrawals, such as Westminster, et cetera, where they were simply part of a supervisory union. And, you know, withdrawing from a district that was already part of an existing supervisory union, not a lot of change there. This, on the other hand, you know, our real first experience was with Ripton. And it was a new experience for Ripton. It was a new experience for the state board. Because we're, you know, dealing with statute that's deficient in many ways. It's very old and it does not sort of align with our current governance structures. And, and we've learned a lot from the process that we've gone through with Ripton. And I think it's, I think the process has been unfortunate for everybody, most notably the, the folks in, in Ripton, because they were the first to really go through this. So I'm, having said that, I'm keen to avoid some of the pitfalls that we ran into with Ripton. And the biggest one we ran into was when we granted that conditional approval, it was on the assumption, if you will, that, that they would find a supervisory union willing to, you know, accept them with open arms. And as I think you are all well aware, that proved not to be the case. And as I gather from your report, the, the same is shaping up for, for your withdrawal effort as well. Nobody is, seems willing to accept a new district. So the, I go back to some testimony we heard. So the, I, I go back to some testimony we heard from Ripton back in January, I believe. And, and I posed the question to them very specifically around whether they, because I had made recommendations to them last year that they really should consult with the School Boards Association in particular, and potentially also the Superintendents Association to get some expert consulting assistance to help figure out what to do with the supervisory union services. And at the, at the time, we were told that they were working with the School Boards Association. I've since learned that there haven't, there, there isn't anybody available to assist with that. And I haven't heard any more recent updates. So I'm curious, since your plan, your intention is to partner with Ripton, Ripton's had many months to begin thinking about how they're going to structure a supervisory union, either for them, I think ideally in their mind and yours, as a joint effort. And based on what we've been hearing from the Superintendents Association and others, there's a scarcity of resources out there. And I'm just wondering if you have any comment on your efforts to, you know, find consultants to help stand up these services and, and to think about how you're going to recruit a superintendent, et cetera? Because that's really critical. And just to close that point out, one of the very early requirements of the quality standards is that you, you're able to fulfill the requirements of, of this state and federal mandates, including IDEA. And you can't do that unless you're able to provide those special education services, which, you know, has to be done through special educators at the direction of a superintendent, a licensed superintendent. So I'll let you respond and then Jenna, I see you have your hand up. Hope you're on mute. You're still on mute.
Thank you.
You're good.
Thank you for the question. And we, I'm, I'm going to step back a little bit, Chair Olson, and, and share with you that we certainly learned a lot from the Ripton experience as well. And one of the things that really caught our attention were the, the letters that you received from superintendents or board chairs from adjoining districts indicating why they were not able to accommodate, including Ripton, in their districts for SU services. And that included the White River Valley District, Addison Central, and also Rutland Northeast. And with that in mind, I will confess that we did not actively put out overtures or seek to initiate conversations with current districts around being brought into their fold, knowing that that would be very highly unlikely. We have retained the services of a consultant, a former school district business manager in Addison Central. And she now works for an accounting firm in Maine that does a fair amount of the accounting for Vermont's school districts. She's extremely well schooled in school finance and has been working with us and with the Ripton Board to begin modeling not only budgets that would be relatively identical in format for the two separate town districts, again, if we were fortunate enough to be able to get approval, but also to establish a supervisory union budget and then to explore the feasibility, both in terms of operational capacity as well as cost and what that would entail for both of the towns. And so we are spending a fair amount of time really looking hard at what services could be subcontracted, what services can't be, for one of the reasons you suggested certainly is reception of certain federal funds, IDEA funds, and a variety of other things, not to mention the administration of special ed services and oversight of those as well. So that is a work in progress, but it is something that we have begun in earnest in the hope that we would receive conditional approval and that we would have that in motion. Paul, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. We have consulted with a variety of superintendents. We've consulted with three former superintendents, actually four, I'm sorry, three, three ex-supreme, prior superintendents and two current superintendents. And we've explained the situation to us and they've all warned us about the size of our school, but thought if we did it with Ripton, that we would be able to do it. So we were having our financial consultant, Brittany, so let me back up a little bit more. So when we were starting this process, we realized we really had to understand how schools are financed and how that affects the tax rate. So Jeanne and I spent a lot of time modeling and we came up with about $3.9 million for running both of the elementary school and for tuitioning our students to Mount Abe. That is more or less exactly what it's costing Lincoln now. We have asked Brittany to take that and to develop a much more detailed budget. So Tori Riley, our principal, has provided us with a forecast of what she views to be the number of staff that we need and what their positions are. And Ripton has done the same thing. We realize we're going to have to have people who can share positions. So we envision a superintendent who will also play some other role. We envision principals who will play some other role. We're very aware that this has to be viable on a, on a, on a cost basis.
I, I would like to return and have some follow-up questions, but I want to give Jenna an opportunity here to ask some questions.
Just following up, thanks. I was just following up on your staffing, what you just touched on and what Oliver started to say. I think a lot of the positions, administrative positions on page 10 beginning, that you started to highlight, the administrative positions are expensive and complicated. And then the staffing positions that are point four, and, and wanting to share those with Lincoln is, I think it's strong, can be a strong model, just like multi-age, multi-grade classrooms, but are really heavily relying on specific human capital and skill sets. And I do have a question around, how far is Lincoln from Ripton? I looked at the map, but it looks like a mountain in between. So I'm just wondering on a snowy day, how far are these when you have point four staff and that you're sharing between schools and special ed services, which need to be delivered in a timely manner?
Yeah, we, let me talk about how far it is from Lincoln to Ripton. It's not the snow so much because both towns do a good job at that. It's more than, it's more than mud season that becomes an issue. And I would say we're about eight miles from Ripton. We do not have a mountain between us. The mountain for both us and for Ripton is to the east of us and it's really the spine of the Green Mountains. We also envision that some part-time teachers for art and special ed and those may, might be employed, one person who does that might be different than the person who does that in, in Lincoln. And we've had in our town, a woman who has been a special ed teacher for, I don't know, 20 or 25 years. And she reassured us that in this area, there are people that are available to do that. Tori, I don't know if you want to add something to that?
Sure. I think with, with the implementation of Act 173, there's going to be much more flexibility around the individuals who deliver special education services. So even in our current district and many of us, we're looking at a model in which general ed interventionists will have more flexibility starting this coming school year to provide services to students who have IEPs. So it really shifts the special, special education landscape in terms of what licensed special educators would be doing. So for example, a special educator may be doing more case management than actual service delivery. So it really opens up the possibilities for how to deliver the educational services to students. So I'm, I'm hopeful, even being, being in a larger district, that it's really going to provide better opportunities for delivering services to students.
Tammy, and then back to Kim.
Thank you, and thank you for all the thorough work and analysis you've done. I found your document very helpful and I can only imagine that that took a lot of time to put together. One question for you, you know, it is the case that class sizes can be too small, right? And I'm seeing some very small class sizes, seven, eight, 10, those are pretty small class sizes. And even when we combine classes into multi, multi-age, multi-grade, they're still pretty small. I'm wondering if in your conversation with Ripton, there has been any consideration to reconfiguring the two elementary schools? So you would have, for example, a lower elementary school and an upper elementary school that would then provide additional opportunities, right, in economies of scale? So for example, all the first and second graders go to one school, all the third and fourth, or so on and so forth? Because I do worry about class sizes being too small. I'd be curious whether or not that's been something you've contemplated and if so, sort of what those discussions have looked like.
I can, I can begin to respond to that and thank you for an excellent question, Tammy. Again, we, we've had all sorts of interesting conversations in which we have to remind ourselves, we're not a duly elected board that can act and move forward on some fascinating initiatives like the one that you raised, which in fact, very well may be a possibility down the road. So I, I can't speak with any real specificity around that. I, I do, I do want to just kind of highlight a statement that Secretary French made in his recommendation to this board a year ago in response to Ripton. And that was to acknowledge, and I really, I, I just want to give Secretary French a shout out, a shout out for being able to, to declare that, you know, there, there is, there is some uncertainty as to what's going on, particularly in our region with regards to school withdrawals and that it may in fact be prudent for the board to designate towns as their own SDs. And I think the language he used, if I recall, directly was that changes may necessitate either the need for a new multi-district SU or some other configuration that cannot yet be contemplated with any specificity. And I think that's part of the challenge that we have been faced with and I think challenge that you have been confronted with here, both with Ripton and now with Lincoln, is recognizing, for instance, to your question, Tammy, we may be looking at very different configurations than what have been traditionally the mold, so to speak. So I'll just leave it at that.
Kim?
There we go. Sorry. I think I'll keep pulling on the thread around human capital and I'm thinking about the highly, actually, let me, I have two, two lines, so if it's okay. To follow up on Tammy's question, I, I look at the geographic consideration and the sharing grades. And with Bristol being just less than six miles to Lincoln and Ripton being nine and a half miles to Lincoln, that sort of shifting configurations becomes a longer ride for students in this newly formed SU or longer ride for shared resources in two separate school districts, which I'm just not even exactly sure how that works from a contracting standpoint, if not staff that's central to the SU. I'm not exactly sure how it works in sharing fractional employees in different, different subject matters or, or grade levels. So that was a concern and thinking about licensure at those grade levels and, or not even grade levels, I guess, within even the different specialties and fractional nursing and the, the trip from Lincoln to Ripton, as Tammy pointed to. So I appreciate the curiosity around shifting grade levels, but I just wanted to point to the obvious, which is that in shifting grade levels in the current SD Unified School District, you would have a closer proximity than you would in this proposed SU. And I, that seems to, like the distance seems to be problematic for folks, so I wanted to point to that. I think I'm trying to understand the cost considerations and I'm wondering, I, I certainly know as, as Jenna pointed out, the cost for the administration can be expensive. I think the available resources, there are a lot of open positions in superintenances currently. And so fractional superintendency may be that much more difficult to staff. I know for each of the school districts, there'd be separate audits, so that's an additional expense. So I'm trying to understand how the costs would be the same if the added expenses come into the picture. And then, so, and, and maybe somebody can speak to the shared resources, or I, I do have some concern around the notion that there would be less needed of special education through, and, and maybe Secretary French can just put context around with 173, do we envision that, that delivery of special education would no longer require the same special educator work? I, I'm sorry if I'm mischaracterizing that.
If I could, Kim, if you don't mind, I think a, a direct, sort of a segue into a direct question I had for folks from Lincoln. How, how many students K through 12, or pre-K through 12, I should say, are on an IEP right now?
Tori, I think you have the better knowledge about that. I, I don't have the exact number. My, my relatively accurate estimate would be between 15 and 18.
That's pre-K through 12, not just elementary, right?
Yes.
Because I didn't see that in the report. And that, that gets to two issues, you know, that, that I think Kim was speaking to, which is, again, I think you've heard it from, from Jenna, from Kim, myself, scarcity of, of resources. So when we're talking about special education, it, it's not just a sort of a quote unquote special educator. There are many different disciplines, right? And it, it, the disciplines, the need for skills is going to be highly dependent on the, the directives of the IEP. So it could be a, a quote unquote special educator, could be an SLP, you know, could be, you know, a behaviorist. There are many different sort of disciplines. And I didn't see in the report sort of a breakdown of, you know, what the current IEPs are, what the staffing is needed to support those IEPs, both in terms of case management as well as the delivery of services. And so that speaks to your staffing need, but it also feeds into your financial model as well. And I, I didn't see that. And that comes back to, I want to bring us back to the key question that we need to answer as a board, which is, can we make a finding as a board that this new district would be able to stand alone and that the students would be attending a school in compliance with our rules, which includes EQS, which, which pulls into that all of the state and federal entitlements, including IDEA? including IDEA, which therefore requires, you know, a, a structure, a sustainable structure to deliver those services. And that, that is the weak point that I think we're all pulling at in, in different ways. So Tammy, then, then, then Kim, and then I see Tori, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Oliver. That's actually, I'll, I'll just sort of echo Oliver's comments, because that was sort of the rabbit hole I was going down, and also around being too small. I also heard sort of, you know, special education teachers as case managers, and we know we have a teacher shortage, and so that's also part of this. But special education teachers has case managers may not actually be the best use of special education time and ta, special education teacher time and talent, right? So if the goal is to provide services largely with more flexible staffing models such as paraeducators, that would be, that would be a concern to me, right? That we would want our most well-trained, well-qualified special education teachers working with our students. But to Oliver's point, you know, the, the math, I'm having trouble with the math, right? Of seeing sort of how all of this works so that the school can appropriately stand up. I'm going to just talk about special education, that kind of program in a way that's both effective and efficient for students, given the numbers and given what we know about tight labor markets. And also, you know, that road that goes from Ripton over to Lincoln, you talk about mud season, that's, that's a gnar, that's a gnarly road, right? That, the road that goes down to Bristol is paved, right? And I know those are, those are very Vermont-esque kind of considerations, but I think they're very real, right, in terms of how we move staff between two districts, how we move students potentially between two districts. You know, that might be a nine-mile road, but that, that is not a nine, that's not a nine-minute drive, right? So I'll just be, just echoing Oliver's comment, but also just, and I think you're hearing, you know, even in Kim, you know, I think you're hearing us all really try to pull this string, which is, how, how does this really work, right? It's one thing to put numbers on paper, but I'm still having a hard time in my head seeing how this works in a way where we continue to provide high-quality educational opportunities for students in the district.
And, and one just quick follow-up to that. I come back to Ripton not being successful in securing a consultant to help with figuring out how they're going to provide these supervisory union services. I understand that together you guys have pulled in a financial consultant who can help with kind of the financial modeling. Very different kettle of fish than the licensed administrator, who's going to help sort of pull together the organizational structure and the plan and the path forward to get you to a point where you can be operational next July, which, you know, there, there's a lot to be done between now and then. And if they can't, if they have so far been, and keep me honest here, I may be wrong, but my understanding is they have not been successful in hiring, securing a consultant, because there are none available. So that speaks to the scarcity of resources. Kim.
Thank you. I think just a couple other questions. And, and to echo the appreciation for the work that has been done, I know you've been at this for a long time, but these are the concerns that I think pop for us when we think about the sustainability of pulling yourselves out of a, a school district with these services that currently exist, and what happens for these students and families and taxpayers in trying to do this, go at this alone. So I, just for scope considerations, can you tell me, we see what your numbers are, but how many in, in the supposed, or the, the conceived of mountain supervisory union, how many total students would there be between Lincoln and Ripton? How many would be in grades you operate of that, and how many then would be tuitioned?
There are a lot of questions there. Let me take a crack at a couple of them and then see what Tori has to add.
I think just enrollment numbers, so that, that's, I'm just looking for the enrollment numbers that would be Lincoln and Ripton combined, those grades, and then just that broken down by grades that are being operated and grades that are being tuitioned.
So.
We readily have that.
Tori, correct me if I'm wrong, but including pre-K, which is 16.8 students, pre-K through sixth grade, and these numbers are from the business office at MAUSD, for us are 93. Our high school students, so grades seven through 12, are 94 students. That, so that gives us 188. I don't have the exact numbers for Ripton. It seems to me they have a smaller elementary enrollment than we do, but a greater number of middle and, and high schoolers. We, we have, in my mind, it's probably a total of about 250, 275, if you count all the grades, pre-K through 12.
For the combined SU, I guess that would be information that would be great to have if you're following up with us. I think it's important for us to conceive of and understand what you're proposing around a supervisory union, because we're going to be charged with either making you a, a school district or not, because there's not a suggestion that there's an SU to receive you that exists currently. So what you're suggesting to us is an SU that doesn't exist currently. So I think it's important for us to understand a little bit more about what that, you know, if that SU can be sustainable and how that impact of the SU, an SU structure creates a budget for itself and then builds it back to the school districts. And then the school districts have those funds to educate their pre-K 12 students, even if only pre-K 6 is in their building, the rest is tuitioned. So basically, the SU budget comes out, then the tuition budget comes out, and then what's left is available for the students in the buildings and to operate the buildings, and just, just sort of like high level. So I think it's important for us to understand all those pieces and what you envision that might look like. And then the other piece that you pointed to as a possibility is designating a high school. And I just, I'm, I'm just going to reflect that what I'm hearing is that, that might be possible, and it might be desirable. And I think it's important to just point to that being the case. The students would go there and you would no longer have a voice on that board or on the operation of that high school. And that might be important for the community to understand. As students move through a system, there is a value in having a voice in that experience pre-K 12. And I think that is often lost in, in not operating those levels, which would be the new model, where before, I believe, Lincoln had been part of the Union High School, which would no longer, and, and had a representation on that board. At least, I apologize if I'm getting that wrong, but that's how I understood it. Thank you so much for entertaining all of my questions.
So we do need to wrap this up. We're a little bit over time, but I think it was a really good discussion and, and to be continued. I think, to sum this up, I think there's, there's some homework for, for the folks from Ripton to undertake before our next meeting. And as, as you can tell, our focus and our concern is really around how this proposed supervisory union is going to move forward. My sense of the board is that, you know, we went through this experience with Ripton. We proved withdrawal on the premise that we wouldn't have the supervisory union quandary that, that, that we, we've all found ourselves in. And I think my sense of the board, and colleagues, keep me honest here, speak up if you, if there's a dissenting voice, but my, my sense of the board is that we are probably reluctant to go into this too quickly and, and make, make a mistake here. Ripton has already been put on the path to try to, you know, pull together these supervisory union services. So they're the long pole in the tent. The idea, I think, between both you and Ripton is that you, this would become a joint supervisory union, which in many ways makes a lot of sense. But I come back to the point that if they're struggling to get this plan together, and I'm, I'm looking at the calendar now, and we're in April, and budgets to be operational next July, budgets need to really start being baked in the fall. I'm a little concerned about where we're at. So I, for our next meeting, I think it might be helpful to hear from both Lincoln and Ripton on what the plan is and what progress to that plan has been made on pulling together this supervisory union structure. And we need to see some solid tangible evidence there to be able to make that finding, and for us as a board to have comfort, that you're going to be able to provide an education that for those students in the new district that meets our, our rules. And to do that, you've got to have a, a, a solid structure to support the, the central office services and the special education services. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. We are very aware that for a town to withdraw from a district is a huge, huge undertaking. So we are sensitive to that, and we certainly don't want to lead Lincoln down the wrong path. So we will continue our discussions with Ripton. We're probably a week away from having a budget, a solid budget for Lincoln and for the supervisory union. And, and that's because we're working with the woman who was the business manager at Addison Central. So we'd be happy to work with Ripton and happy to come back with answers to your questions.
But not, I think that the numbers are important, but it's, it's not, the numbers are, aren't, don't have any meaning if there aren't people to go with the numbers or, and a plan to get the people into those positions.
Yeah. Quickly, and Tori, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've talked with, I think, all of the, the teachers at Lincoln Community School, and they have indicated an interest in continuing. Most of them have a long history at Lincoln. Of course, that depends on the contract negotiations that we can undertake, and.
The board can, new board would undertake.
Right, the new board would undertake. And we can't do that until the supervisory union is formed, and probably we get into the beginning of next year.
Those, those are teachers in the school, but I'm talking about your superintendent, your special ed director, your special educators, and your sent, your other central office staff. So there needs to be, obviously not expecting to have them hired, but there needs to be a plan, which is why I come back to the query I made of Ripton back in January, which is, do you have a consultant, somebody like a licensed superintendent, somebody who has relevant expertise pulling something like this together, working with you? And the last information I had was that they've been unable to source a resource to, to help with that. So that's the kind of thing that I, I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see some progress on to feel comfortable that there's a solid plan here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great questions, guys. You've pointed us in some important directions. Appreciate that.
One final question for you to, to research as well is, what's the legal basis for a new school district, once it's created, to raise taxes to pay for all the staff that need to be employed in the interim up until you become operational? And it's not a trick question. I genuinely don't know the answer to that.
We'll try to find out for you.
And I'm not expecting you to answer it now. I'm just, I'm suggesting, take that away. I'm, I'm, I've been thinking this through, and I'm thinking you are, you're already part of a school district. You're paying taxes into that school district. And there's going to be this parallel school district set up that will need to retain staff for, to help with the transition. How does, how, how are those funds raised, and what's the authority to spend those funds? I, I, I think there's, again, these are gaps, and I'm not faulting anybody. These are gaps in the statute and things that nobody's had to deal with yet, because we're in uncharted territory. So that's just another question that came to mind.
Thank you.
Tori, final comment?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to provide a little bit of context as a reminder that we're only five years into being part of a unified district. And before that, the Lincoln Town School District, even though we were part of a supervisory union, had our own budget, and we, you know, for, for decades, weathered the ups and downs of special education costs and students moving in and out and so forth. And it's, it's not an easy process, and it's true that in a small mountain town, it's not always easy to find the, the exact right personnel. But we've always been successful at doing that, because our school is resilient, it's flexible, and it's a place where people want to be, which is why the Save Community Schools, folks, created themselves in response to the proposal that our school be repurposed. And furthermore, in response to the possibility that if we merge with the Virgens District, the town would no longer have the right to vote on whether to retain the school or not. So I understand that there are so many questions that can't be answered. And part of this is, you know, understanding, this isn't a measurable thing, but understanding that our community is one of flexibility, resiliency, and has a level of comfort with ambiguity that I can really appreciate as a state board. It's, you're, you're wrestling with all these things with every proposal that you get. So I appreciate your questions and, and just your time to hear about Lincoln. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all for all your hard work and, and answers to our questions, and look forward to meeting with you at our next meeting. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care, folks.
Wonderful. So, thank you. So, Amande, are you on with us? And I see Marcus there.
Yeah.
Excellent. So apologies, we ran a little overtime, but we did pick up some time. So you, you'll still have the full, full, full-time allotted to you. So, so with that, I am going to, let me just make sure of the right agenda item. We're going to move on to agenda item G, and we have, even though we're a little bit behind schedule, you still have 45 minutes for presentation and, and questions from the board. So just so maybe, why don't I just introduce for, for background information before I turn it over to you, Amande and Mark? So Act One of, was it 2018? Does that sound right? I think so. Okay. Mark, you're on mute. So Act One created the Ethic Studies Advisory Group, otherwise known as the Act One Advisory Group, to, and, and charged it with pulling together some recommendations to present to the State Board of Education for updates that it might make to our, our rules, specifically to the Ed Quality Standards Rules. So the advisory group has completed the first phase of its work and has some recommendations. So we've invited Amande and Marcus, the co-chairs of the working group, to present those recommendations to the board. Concurrently, as a reminder, we, as a board, have established a, a subcommittee of the board that is chaired by Tammy Colby and Kim Gleason, that will be looking at opening up our Ed Quality Standards Rules, or broadly, but specifically to look at, at, at these recommendations and to take those on as well as other changes we may wish to make to the EQS rules. So today's presentation is going to be kind of the high-level overview of, of what's being recommended, and then we'll refer this to the EQS committee for, for further work. So, Amande, Mark, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good mornings. Thank you, thank you for having me. I am going to present. Mark, do you want to introduce? I am going to present, uh, Mark, do you want to introduce yourself while I get the screen up?
Sure. Um, good morning, all. I'm Mark Hage. I live in Montpelier, Vermont. And as Chair Olson said, I am the vice chair of the Act One Working Group and have been working with this project with Amanda and many others since the fall of 2019.
Right. Oh, uh, did I do this right? I don't think so.
I'm not seeing anything yet. Um, Suzanne, I don't know if you need to give permission to Amanda?
I don't believe that I need to. There we go. Thank you.
There we go. Yep.
Thank you so much. Um, it's hard for me presentations because then I can't see you. But-
We can see you and the presentation. So we're good. I don't, I don't know if you want to go into slideshow mode or if you want to.
Yes, uh, I will do that. So did, are you seeing the PowerPoint or the?
Yes.
We are.
Well, it's in Google. It looks like it's in Google Docs right now. So, but if it gets slideshow, you should be good.
Perfect. Okay. So like I said, I cannot see you. So bear with me. And I'm going to be moving around. So thank you so much for having me. My name is Amanda Garcia. For the record, I am the chair of the Act One Working Group, also the Director of Policy, Education Outreach for the Vermont Human Rights Commission. Um, and I am so happy to give you this today. I want to just acknowledge all the work that working group members and community members did. We see this as a result of all the people that have, uh, really worked in Vermont to advance racial justice, to advance, um, and, uh, an inclusive school community in our state. So I, um, beyond grateful to all the voices that gave, their work to this document. Um, so who we are, for those of you who do not know, the working group is, was a law that passed in 2019. And, um, it created this working group, which brings together people from different education stakeholders, like the Vermont School Board Association, superintendents, curriculum directors, the, uh, Teachers Union, the Superintendent's Association, the Office of Racial Equity and the Human Rights Commission, and then, um, a variety of members of the community appointed by a group named the Education Justice Coalition of Vermont. Those members are, come from different backgrounds, ethnic, racial. We have representation from the LGBTQ community, from the Abenaki community, other indigenous groups. We have four students in our group. And, um, yeah, we, we just represent a variety of voices together. Um, so we, our work has two purposes, to review the Vermont State Educational Standards and make recommendations for updates and to review state statutes, state board rules, school district and supervisory union policies that concern or impact standards for student performance or curriculum. So we have been working on this education quality standards for a year and a half now, maybe two years, Mark, correctly.
Yeah, it's basically two years.
Yeah, two years. So this is the result, and we will be moving to the, uh, Vermont State Education Standards, um, soon, because we have an RFPL for a consultant that's going to support us. So like I said, we have 23 people in our group. And this was the project timeline. So I wanted to share that we, uh, in August 2021, um, after a year or so, we voted on the first draft of our document. And we felt that because we needed to hear from people, we tasked, um, each of the working group members to give us the names of people who they saw as education leaders, that wanted to look at our, our, our document. And so we included teachers, students. We have the voices of many groups, organizations, and each of the working group members, uh, that had, that were appointed by an organization, um, or like eight, by an agency, needed to go back to their people to ask them, what do you think? So the feedback that we received is really rich. Um, so for example, the School Board Association went back, created a subcommittee from their group to look at, um, the document, gave feedback like that. Same with the Superintendent's Association. So each of the group had their own way of getting feedback from their group to then bringing back. And so we received feedback between September and October of 2021. And then we have our own EQS Subcommittee who started working on incorporating all of that. So this is where we are. Not sure if it's spring, but the spring and summer, uh, today it's, um, yeah, we're, this is the result, what you will be seeing today. Um, so how we use the community feedback is really important because, um, we had a lot of groups and members that gave us, each of the comments related to a paragraph were put in, and then the EQS Subcommittee will be, you know, looked at everything that had, that was related to that paragraph. All the submissions were in a folder where, um, the Subcommittee members had to read all of it. And then, um, the full working group had access to all the documents that we, that we received. The result is that all learners in Vermont have a strong learning environment that's, that supports them in reaching their goals. This is what we are hoping that this document will do. Um, I'm gonna pause there for a minute in case Mark wants to add something about that process.
No, I think you covered the ground very nicely. Thank you.
Um, okay, you can still, now see, I stopped the sharing, right? Okay.
You're still on, oh.
I'm still there?
Yep, well not, yeah, now we can see it.
Okay. Okay, so what are our goals? So our goals are to promote critical thinking regarding the history contributions and perspectives of ethnic groups and social groups. A little bit about that. So the Act One Law itself has a definition of ethnic groups and social groups. As someone who worked on the passage of the bill, um, there was a lot of deliberation and confusion about like what, who to add in there as groups. The education quality standards itself, um, we didn't use those names specifically for this reason. For example, in the definition of ethnic groups in our, um, in Act One, in the law itself, there is, um, so it names Chicanox or Latinx. We, we wanted to make sure that we include everybody. Latinx is an evolving term in the Latino community, Latina community, Latinx community. Uh, a, many of the Afro-Latinos feel left out from that term. Uh, we also in Latin America have a, a ma, a really big indigenous population who lives in the United States who also don't see themselves reflected in that term. So when we were looking at this, we really wanted to expand. We see this education quality standards so beautiful because it's a very positive, positive document. It's a positive rule that is going to include everybody. A lot of the work that we're doing is grounded in this, uh, idea that seven years from now, we don't have to have people coming back to say, hey, you didn't include me. So we made it as broad as possible to include all the different groups. Not groups, but all the people that, you know, live in Vermont who are, who are part of our, of our school community. So that's, that's, um, I wanted to put that caveat in there. Um, so include content and relating structural materials, methods that enable students to explore safely the questions of identity and membership in ethnic groups and social groups, race equality and racism, facilitate a welcoming environment for all students while taking into account parental concerns about bias or exclusion of ethnic groups or social groups, identifying more ways families can share input with schools going forward, and ensuring engagement opportunities that provide families that welcome the means of raising any concern about their child's experiences as it bears on race or ethnic or social group identity at school. Um, and there's a, a lot more pieces to that, uh, that I invite you to look at, the Act One Law, where it has some of those, uh, things, but I wanted to put a frame on that. Um, so here are the changes, were suggestions, uh, suggesting, and we'll go back and forth with Mark. Um, so we did some work on the statement of purpose, purpose to really include the, well, the purpose of the education quality standards. We, uh, looked at discrimination and how it impacts students also learning from the experiences of people, um, that, um, directly, indirectly worked with us to think about discrimination. Uh, so we, we kind of expanded a little bit about how we look at discrimination to include, um, and to highlight if you, if you, um, if you group, if you memberships around language access. So for ELL students, understanding our, the population of in, and migration that we have, learning from some of the migrant, uh, education project in Vermont and the students. And I'm sorry, my son's crying. So if you hear them. Um, and then we also expanded a lot of definitions. So in total, we have 33 definitions that we have put forward. We think definitions are really important just to center everybody into what we are saying. Mark, would you like to add something around that?
I think, I think the only thing I would add to Amanda's comments is that in the statement of purpose, we are very clear that every child should be afforded educational opportunities that are not only substantially equal, but also equitable, anti-racist, discriminatory, culturally responsive and inclusive. And we have defined those terms in the document. And you will find those terms throughout the document, both for emphasis purposes, but also for the sake of consistency. So we ground ourselves early on in the statement of purpose to those goals, and you will find them reiterated throughout the revised EQS manual. And the definition on discrimination, I think, speaks to an earlier point that Amanda made, that you will not find lists of groups in our EQS revised manual. Instead, you find language that is written so that whoever reads it says, this speak to me, family, my children, my concerns. I am protected by this language regardless of how I define myself. And the discrimination definition in particular, which you'll find is throughout the definitions and throughout the document, underscore that.
We also include the little notice that, you know, this, uh, document does not give a right of action, just to, um, or, or, or our definition of discrimination. Do we, do we want to take questions by area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? Um, let's try to keep them sort of clarifying questions for now. So we make sure we, we get through the whole thing. Um, actually, let's hold off on questions and, and come back because otherwise we could get sidetracked. I'll let you finish your presentation.
Okay, okay, great. Um, yeah, so we, 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 and I'm gonna go over really quick so that we have time for questions. But some of the overview areas that we had are the curriculum content, curriculum planning, teacher support and teaching practices. And again, I just want to emphasize that this was, this working group is really key because it brings together, you know, curriculum directors, superintendents, principals, the voices of the groups with the lived experience of many of the community members who are there. So this is informed by the lived experience of people, uh, as parents, students, teachers, with the, you know, uh, institutional knowledge from the educational leaders in these different agencies, uh, including, uh, you know, Deputy Director Heather and from the agency and, and also here's some of those areas. Uh, Mark, do you want to add something to that?
No, I think you've covered it. Thank you.
Student support, you know, we focus on accessible materials, career and technical education, counseling, support services, flexible pathways and graduation requirements. Again, you know, thinking of students with disabilities, we have an array of, um, organizations and individuals that gave us feedback on this. And I, uh, want to bring the voice of Deborah Lizzie Baker, who passed away a couple of weeks ago, was a champion in this work. So I just want to bring her here today because she's been, um, a leader in the disability rights movement in Vermont and really believed in this work. So I just, uh, I, I want to bring her, her work in here today. Um, so yes, thinking about accessible material, not only for our ELL population, our, um, students with disability, but for all students, uh, and, and how, how do we support that? We looked at flexible pathways. We looked at graduate, graduation requirements. And then, um, yes. Mark, anything you want to add on that? Student supports?
No, ma'am. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Um, school administration, you know, like what, what does the school feedback look like? How does the improvement plans? How does the leadership? And how do we include, the, the voices of people in those communities into these processes, processes? Mark, anything on that?
You're good.
Okay. And then I would just talk a little bit about, um, understanding our challenges. So, uh, obviously time, it, it's, we only meet once a month, uh, 10 times a year. But I have to say it's like an incredible, incredible amount of work that was done for this. We, we looked at language accessibility. We would love this document to be a little more accessible in terms of, um, being able to say to our community members and our students, here's what this education quality standards. So they, as is, um, is not very accessible. We have actually, uh, contracted a group in Chicago who does, um, language accessibility and plain language translation. Um, so they are supporting us. We will be finished with that in a, in a couple, in a week, uh, or so that will be done so that we can bring this information out to the public in a very accessible way. And then I think there needs to be a little more understanding about the understanding that the EQS rule. And I, I will touch on after questions a little bit about, uh, the Holocaust bill because I was listening that a lot, like they're looking at the EQS. So I have some ideas for that that I can share, but I'll leave that up to the end, if that is okay. And I will, uh, stop sharing my screen so I can see you. And yeah, so that is the, the, so, uh, what you have, so we just voted on this document on the 14th, which was last week. Um, and I am currently on vacation with my children. So I'm trying to do it all. But I decided yesterday that I couldn't do it all. So I talked to Oliver. So what I sent Suzanne sent you is a draft. It's, is the final document. But now we just need to do a real copy edit, which I will do, um, with Mark when I get back to the office at next, on Monday. And so you, you will have the final document by Wednesday. Uh, but I did send you a draft, so you can see our beautiful work. Uh, but we just need to do a little copy edit and make sure that all the drafts align beautifully. And that is what I have for you.
Thank you, Amanda and Mark. Um, Patrick, question, comment?
Thank you so very much for all your hard work and your persistence in bringing this to fruition. You mentioned that consulting a translation group out of Chicago. Are you aware or familiar with the Vermont Multilingual Task Force here in Burlington that does the same thing? And, uh, they are now, I think, housed in the Department of Health because they did a lot of the translation on COVID for the, um, you know, increasingly diverse community. So that's the question. And then part two, you started this work in 2019 and it's now 2022. And so during the middle of this, the country, the com, the state, the community, the educational system has been significantly impacted by COVID. How much changes or adjusting did you have to do to, um, meet some of these, um, new requirements?
Thank you. Um, so for the first questions, yes, and the Human Rights Commission has been part of the Multilingual Task Force. The company that we hired out of Chicago is a company that- The company that we hired out of Chicago is a company that doesn't do translation. They do plain language, which we do not have that many people in Vermont. So they basically take our jargon language and make it into a plain accessible so that people that are not part of the education system can understand what a document is. And then we will work with the multilingual task force and ALV and all the other organizations to translate it. That is the goal, to translate that, those documents to the ten different languages that we have here in Vermont to make sure that people understand what we're trying to do. And then for the second questions, yes, part, part of it was COVID, you know, we, we did go remote very soon thereafter. The, you know, when the pandemic, we basically began this work in January or like December. And then our third meeting was in March and it was back in Zoom. So that has made a lot of impact for us in terms of the work itself. The document itself does not, like there's no like COVID related things in there that we have included. We are a positive crew that, you know, will evolve. I don't know if Mark, you want to add something to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of process, the conceptualization and the revision work and the deliberations on the EQS manual, virtually all of it had to be done because of COVID virtually. And as Amanda said, that presented a number of logistical and administrative challenges and certainly impacted the kind of conversations we could have. But I would also add that the conversations for the last two years, both within the EQS subcommittee itself, which did a lot of heavy lifting here, and with the Act One Working Group and with the public, was very deep and rich and complex despite the fact that it had to be facilitated through a virtual platform. But to Amanda's last point, I don't think there's anything sort of specific in the document itself that we present that speaks to the post-COVID world that we are all going to be transitioning to and the kind of challenges that that will present. But no doubt, we will be grappling with all of that in due course, as will local school boards and staffs and families and students.
Tammy and then Patrick again.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Mark. And I, I'm listening to you talk about all the work over the last two years and thinking about doing that over Zoom. And holy moly, that's a lot and I really appreciate it. And, you know, you, I've seen the earlier drafts. I haven't seen the final draft yet. It sounds like it's still a work in progress. So one of the questions I want to ask is a little bit about process. You know, the Act One definition specifically calls out in terms of its definition of ethnic groups. Groups have been historically subject to persecution and genocide. And we have heard, I know that you've also received some letters from the Jewish community about concerns about how their interests are reflected in this document in particular. And so I know that you've gotten some feedback from them on that. And I'm curious how you have responded to that feedback and sort of how that conversation has evolved in light of some of their concerns about perhaps those other kinds of perspectives being represented in your document. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know, Mark, do you want to take this one or you want me to take it? I'll take it.
Don't you start?
So I want to be very clear that we received the feedback and we looked at all the feedback. The way that the feedback was, the way that I handled the feedback was that we took a document and then everything that was within a paragraph was included in this document. And then all the other letters and additions were also, you know, viewed by everybody. So just to put that out there, I think that, that there were three pieces of our Jewish community that we're asking once to include the definition of antisemitism in this document, which we also, you know, it, it was not about antisemitism. It, it was about we, we were not including homophobia, ableism, Islamophobia, xenophobia, because once we start naming, then it goes kind of, you know, then we will never end. And, and the, and what I said at the beginning, that this document frames this as a very positive. I don't think that just the same, we are not including genocide as a thing because we're not including all of the forms of, of genocide that are in that sense, in this document. I think, I don't think our work is done. And I think there was a conversation that the definitions kind of, you know, like the only piece, it says groups that have been marginalized. Can you repeat that again?
Marginalized.
Not, not marginalized is who were.
Are you referring to the Act One definition of ethnic groups?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, what that says is it says groups have been historically subject to persecution or genocide.
Exactly. So it's kind of like the same. In our definition of ethnic groups, we went to a robust conversation about that. And it, it didn't feel like that specifically because we were not going to be naming groups that were enslaved, groups that were. So it's not, we didn't think the EQS itself is the right piece for that. And that if the Jewish community were included in the ethnic pieces and the racial pieces in the religious piece, that putting that aside will be all the other groups that also wanted the same. So for the EQS, that's a conversation you can have. We did have other Jewish groups that came to our state board to kind of say, yeah, no, we don't agree. So it's kind of like two different voices. And I will be more than happy to have, send them to you so that you could hear that, those two perspectives. So it's kind of those two perspectives. Some of the Jewish groups were saying, we feel included and, you know, we don't need to add anything because we don't want to stay away, we want to stay away from naming. We want to be part of the, of the whole. So, Mark, I don't know.
If I may have a quick follow-up question to that though. I, I appreciate the not, the, the naming. I think that I, I appreciate the, the complexity with that. And, and I think, you know, it sounds like that was a very well thought out decision. That said, the, the Act One definition of ethnic group has two parts. One where it does name groups, but then there's this and, which is far more general that says groups have had been historically persecuted or, or experienced genocide without naming a particular racial, ethnic or cultural group. And I'm curious why that, that was in statute, right? That, that language in statute? I'm curious why that language or that phrasing didn't migrate over to your recommendations.
I don't think we even, you know, I don't think we like said, we're not going to add the group. I, I, I don't know, Mark, if you have.
Well, it's a good question and there was no decision not to include it. I think we felt the definitions that we came up with and worked hard on, particularly discrimination, ethnicity, ethnic group, ethnic studies. We felt the language was comprehensive enough to address those particular concerns without necessarily having to name them explicitly. And, and again, this may be something we will revisit as a result of this conversation. But there was no deliberate attempt to exclude that language. We felt like the language that was in the definitions in particular sort of covered the ground we thought we needed to cover in order to protect all people, however they define themselves, whether it be by race, ethnicity, a history of persecution. In fact, the ethnic studies definition speaks to people who have been marginalized, oppressed, systematically sort of denied. You'll sign the words exclusion and discrimination throughout the document. I think that's probably the best answer we can give you today.
Thanks, Mark. And please don't think I'm trying to poke holes in it. I'm just trying to understand sort of how you came to the decisions that you came to, particularly since there has been, have been concerns raised. And so it's always helpful for me to understand the process and your thinking around that. So I really appreciate you being transparent with that. And again, this is a really hard thing to do and I'm very appreciative of all the careful thought that you've put into it.
And I, and we really appreciate the questions.
Yeah, and I, I, I would just add that, and even the timing is really hard. You know, like we had in February, we spent our whole meeting on literacy. And so it was like the timing to come here, like being able to revise and go back and forth. So that specific one addition to the ethnic studies. And I, and, and I just, I remember Mark and I, I, I told him like, we need to bring it back. But our agenda for the EQS was so packed for the EQS of committee that we were like really hanging on our strings to, to get to the finish line. So I, I hope that the, you know, that your subcommittee looks at it. I'll be more than happy to, you know, send you the people that, that came to our, to our meeting last month to testify so you could hear both voices and, and the documentation that we have. But yes, thanks for the question.
Thank you. Patrick?
Okay, so thank you. Since you started this in 2019, a hot button issue that has emerged is critical race theory. And today, one of our legislators is doing statewide forums and listening sessions on this. What was your experience? What have you heard putting this study together?
I, I am going to say that I am a positive person that believes in the people of Vermont. And I have not, we, we have not, it, it has not come to us at all through our work. It has not impacted, affected. We have not heard voices. We hope that that continues. I think like part of the work that we are doing is really supporting our students who have been marginalized for too long. You know, I keep going back to our report twenty years ago that says that racism in schools is pervasive and part of some of the things that we hear. So I, I think work is grounded on the students' experiences and on the lived experiences of many of the people who are part of the working group. So I, I see that as a little bit of noise that should not deflect us from continuing the good work that we need to do for our state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final questions from the board? Amanda, Mark, final comments, questions from you?
I think I would just say that if it would be helpful at all for you to hear from particular members of the working group or the EQS Subcommittee to understand more deeply our thought process, our work process, we'd be more than happy to engage you in those conversations. The questions today are helpful to us truly. And the deeper our conversation goes and to whatever extent we can help clarify for you how we arrived at the conclusions that we did, we'd be more than happy to do that for you.
Yeah, I, I would, I have one question. Go ahead.
Don't all go ahead.
Oh, I just had a question about the process, just to make sure that we know what happened. So you will receive the final, final on Wednesday. This one is again, like that is at work. We just need to copy edit some of the things. You have the final draft, but our, our final recommendation, we will be submitting a letter with it. And, you know, at, at least some of where, some of what inform some of our work, some of the, you know, leaders, not leaders, but theorists that inform some of our work will be included in that. And, and so, yeah, so I want to know the process. I think that there is a, a group of people who really want to make sure that there is a public process, democratic process for it. So I, I want to be able to say, okay, here's how you can get engaged with that process.
Great. That, that was, that was sort of how I was going to wrap things up. So we, so we're going to refer this to our, our new EQS committee headed by Tammy and Kim. So that, that committee really will, and it's pretty good sized committee of board members. So I think they're, they're going to sort of intake this and then figure out the structure and plan. And importantly to your, to your question, an engagement plan. Because, you know, our, our practice has been with our rulemaking to have, have it be as open and inclusive to members of, of the public as possible. And the, you know, the real work of the board will, will be done within, within that committee. So I'm, I'm going to defer to, to the committee once they've had a chance to kind of digest. I'm not going to put them on the spot now, but I'll give them a chance to digest this and formulate a, a work plan and a public engagement plan. And then they'll provide regular updates back to the board at our monthly meetings. And ultimately, it'll culminate in a, a recommendation for updates to the EQS rules that will initiate, at that point, will initiate the formal rulemaking process, which will then open up the more formal public comment period. And I'm sure you, you guys are familiar with how that process works. But we try to, we really endeavor to try to do the heavy lifting in a very open, public way, the actual drafting before we submit the final draft to ICAR. So our, our hope is that we'll have a really solid draft with lots of input from, from, from stakeholders in the public at large before it goes to the, in ICAR. So. Cool. Wonderful. Well, we very much appreciate all of the work that you've done and, and your presentation today. And the board is very much looking forward to taking this to the next step. And, you know, expect to hear regular updates from the committee at our meetings going forward. And then obviously the meetings of the committee are all open to the public. So any member of the public who wishes to follow the work of the committee, provide input, you know, there, there will be opportunity to do that at all of those committee meetings.
Great. Well, thank you so much. And yeah, we are a resource. I, I hope that you will look at, you know, all, all the work so that we're not recreating the wheel. And see, you know, we had twenty-three members with really important feedback that, that done with the community. So I'll be happy to support it, to give you all that we have. Everything's in a folder, public. So you have access to all of that information and we will include the links for that report.
Thank you so much for the time today, for the questions. We truly look forward to the next stage of dialogue. We know that the work that we've done is at the final statement and that no doubt that we can continue to improve on it. So thank you and we'll see you down the road.
Thanks, everyone. So I think we've reached a good opportunity for a break unless there are any objections. I would suggest we reset ten minutes and reconvene at ten forty promptly. So please mute yourself and turn your camera off and be back at ten forty. Alrighty, so I'm gonna, we appear to have a quorum back, so I'm going to reconvene meeting of the State Board of Education. And we're now on item H, which is an update on S seven twenty-seven, which is bill having to do with updating chapter eleven, which covers unified school districts. And much of the discussion as of late in the Senate has focused on the so-called withdrawal provisions. So, so Kim, myself and Donna have all been, you know, very actively involved in this. Kim, did you want, uh, do you want to provide a quick update? Do you want me to provide an update? Or do you want to?
Turn it up. I can share the update with you. How's that, Oliver? Because Oliver has had the good fortune of being the one sitting in front of folks most recently. Collectively, it's interesting as it moved from the House to the Senate, the, the sets of questions and sort of the focuses of the work, they've got it in, in chunks that allow it to be really the piece that we are spending our time sharing thoughts on are related to withdrawals as, as would make sense. Other pieces of it, you know, at different times, there had been a proposal from Herb Olson, I believe from Starkspur. I believe from Starkspurrow, that um was to basically strike all of what the work that has happened and offer a condensed version of something that they felt would be easier for. And I don't wanna simplify it or be disrespectful, but basically simplify the withdrawal process. And I think our responsibility in this is to do as we just did and have a really critical thought process around what creates sustainable, high-quality education for all students. And that's our state-level responsibility. And doing so is not necessarily an easy process. And I think that we have been pretty consistent in our messaging on that point. And we don't need to be the final say on it. We need there to be a state-level um uh responsibility to that. And if it's the legislature, as it might be in town charters, great, um we don't need to own it. But I think the most recent updates um have brought us back to guardrails on the withdrawal process that we are now, the Senate asked for and is um looking more like what we originally proposed to the House. So um the pendulum swings a little bit, but we've, that's what we've offered back most recently is um that it would not be in the end of the day, an advisory opinion by the State Board, but that we are offering the criterion for what's required of the process and that we would ultimately um indicate whether or not it was reasonable to move forward. And what had come out of the House was an advisory opinion that would go back to the voters if we declined to um support. And that was for those, I mean, our most recent testimony has been about those that are currently in process. And this is the concern folks are having. Um Starkspurrow hasn't even voted yet. So we are not of the mind that they are in fact in process technically. Although they are, I guess, working on getting the necessary votes, I think. And then I, I think what came out of the most recent conversation that Oliver was able to be there for, and I did end up being able to listen in, was um some, some clarity and questions from senators to say, it sounds like the problem that we've seen almost exclusively in these that are withdrawing from school district, unified school districts, is the concern for closure of their schools. And are we trying to use the wrong tool to solve that problem? Because we're, you know, the, they're looking for ways through governance to solve their worries about closing their schools. So that was an interesting perspective brought to the conversation. And Oliver was able to, I think, reflect the thought that governance is not, you know, to upend governance for solving that problem may not be the tool that's appropriate for the job. And fill in where I got it not quite right or what else I missed. And certainly Donna, if you're with us as well.
Yeah, I, I think you did a, a great job uh summing that up. And, and it was, um, and I, and I wanted to bring a little bit of this discussion to the board level because I was pressed multiple times by the committee, you know, what does the board think about, say, a, a moratorium on school closures or just school closures in general? And I was very cautious to say, listen, the State Board is not in the business of, you know, closing schools or repining on whether schools should or shouldn't close. That's not our role. Our focus and our um kind of our, our, our mission is really much more focused on, on governance. So the types of questions, you know, we were asking of, of the representatives from Lincoln about, you know, the sustainability of, of what they're trying to accomplish and how this is all gonna work. It was, you, you know, very different from, you know, the merits of whether a, a school should be open or, or closed. That being said, you know, the, the, the committee, quite rightly, you know, pointed out, came to the conclusion that, you know, these really thorny issues in, in Starkspurrow, Lincoln and, and Ripton were really all um instigated for concern about potential school closure. And I know we heard it from uh Ripton. And I think, and I almost asked them to, to confirm today, but I, I don't think I'm going too far out on a limb. I believe if we were to ask Lincoln, they would say that they would not be withdrawing if um there wasn't a, a threat of school closure um on the horizon. So the, the question that came up in the committee was, you know, should we, you know, should we separate these issues out and be looking at, you know, governance changes, whether it's withdrawal or mergers, you know, one category? And then to the extent that people have concerns at the local level about local school closures, should we look at that separately? And, and I think there's a lot of merit in separating these issues out because, because we don't really have any standards um that govern whether schools should be opened or closed, or whether certain grades should be open or closed. They're, they're made on the ground by local school boards uh according to their own criteria. And when you have a, a large school district that includes many towns and one community's school might be, might be closed according to criteria set by the district, you know, it's understandable that some of the smaller towns could potentially feel disenfranchised from that process. So absence some state standards to, you know, provide checks and balances that everybody can feel comfortable with, that leads people down this other path of trying to solve that concern with a pretty drastic change in governance, which as we've seen from Ripton, we're starting to see with Lincoln, creates a whole host of other challenges. So I, that's where we're at today. They've invited me back in today uh along with Donna for some further discussion. They're looking for some ideas. But I wanted to get a sense from the board on this idea of really kind of separating out these issues of school closure from governance changes. And whether you think that makes sense and whether it's worth suggesting, I think at, at least maybe some more comprehensive study on the issues of standards that apply to school closures and, and perhaps some sort of a moratorium on these governance changes until these things are separated out and, and can be addressed in a more thoughtful way. Tammy.
I really appreciate your last comment about some standards or some guidance in either in statute or from the legislature and some other way around school closures. Because I think you're right, right? Like this is, but we're sort of in the crosshairs of this, of this moment, right? Where, where we have statute that is in some regards promoting consolidation, right? And that might actually be the statutory intent here, right? To gain some efficiencies, to promote some school closures and other kinds of governance structures. And then at the same time, we have communities that feel really strongly um about sort of not letting that happen. And sort of where that, that contested terrain is getting played out is at the State Board. And here we sit, and I thought your memo was really terrific, Oliver, that laid out like, here are all the policy questions that just aren't addressed in the law. And we're sitting in this space between potentially what statute is pushing, right? The system toward and what the system is pushing back against. And so until we can resolve some of that contested terrain, I think the State Board is really gonna struggle with how exactly do we adjudicate, mediate and sort of engage in this conversation between the statute that's talking to us one way and the communities that are talking to us from another way. So the idea of having some more clarification on the part of the legislature around a criteria for school closure or sort of if, or direction to us about how they like to have us handle this, I think is absolutely essential. Because it, it's just, we're just gonna continue to be ground zero for this, this sort of loggerhead debate that, that is going on. So thank you for all your work on that, but to the extent that you can push for that, I, I would really appreciate that.
And, and you just reminded me, Tammy, they're, they're actually in the text of Act 46, right? So Act 46 is obviously oriented towards consolidation uh or, more accurately, but unification of governance systems. But at the same time, it also included language that said that the, the, the intent was not to close small schools. So they're, they're not necessarily mutually exclusive, right?
They're not mutually exclusive, but I don't think anybody teased out how that, how that overlapped that could, right? Like we have two, you have two almost conflicting goals, right? That is somehow trying to find some common ground. And, and that common, then that search for common ground seems to be consistently landing at the State Board of Education's feet. And we are not in a position without specific statutory guidelines or guidance from the legislature for how to adjudicate or mediate that situation. And so I think they've gotta help us, provide us with some more guardrails architecture, name frameworks, whatever we wanna call it, for how to navigate that contested terrain between what in statute is likely to conflicting goals.
But what I, what I'd like to see is that if there's a concern about school closure, there's a different path that folks go down, not down the path of withdrawal. So I, I, and I don't know, I haven't quite figured out the best way to, how that could be structured. But, but just conceptually, if your concern is you don't want your school to be closed and you, you're looking for a form to address that concern or a vehicle or, or an approach to address that concern, the, the way, the improper way to do that is through withdrawal of, of, from the, from the governance structure. That is not the correct vehicle. There, there should be a different mechanism to address and adjudicate those concerns with finality, one way or the other, that, that doesn't then lead to, okay, that didn't work. So now we're gonna try to withdraw a, a, as a, as a way around the system.
I, I agree. I think there needs to, I, no, I agree with you. I think there needs to be a first line, line of inquiry around that or sort of adjudication or whatever, that where that, where we deal, where there's a form for dealing with that question, right? And there, there just isn't, right? There just isn't. So I, I would agree with you on that. But I do think that it is important to recognize that the statute in and of itself may have conflicting goals. And that, and I, what I see in your policy memo is laying out all the, all, laying out the quagmire and what the questions are and where, where, and the State Board is sitting right in the middle of that quagmire right now. And so I really appreciate you laying those questions out and your ongoing testimony to the legislature around this. Because it's going to be very difficult for us to navigate in these waters until we get some more clarification.
Kim.
I was just gonna say, while it expressly states that it is not the intent to close small schools, I also don't believe it's the intent to stand in the way of that closure. If that is the ultimate um a means of delivering on quality education and equity uh of opportunity in those communities. I just think it's simply not the responsibility of um the legislature or the board to, to jump into what is a district consideration for the taxpayers, the communities and the governance within that district. I think standards would be really helpful to be clear all the areas that need to be considered before proposing um school closure. We, we frankly don't know, cause it doesn't come before us, whether or not that's all already happening. We know that those that come before us are upset with the answer. We do know that. So that is like, otherwise, we may find ourselves in a place of making assumptions about what was or wasn't done in advance of the studies that um resulted in potential suggestions for what might happen. I think we ended up hearing from the folks at um A C S D that while that was in the study information, there was no immediate action plan being considered by them. And so uh like, we end up with this ancillary information versus understanding what's part of that process. So I, I would def, for me, I would support the idea that there's clarity around what's expected. Should that be considered? What Donna offered and reminded us all is that some, some articles of configuration may have been designed either with a time limit within which schools could not be closed or been even more prescriptive of what that would mean if schools are being proposed to be closed and that articles of configuration can be changed at any time. And that's currently available within the law. So she did offer some sort of legal remedies. And the concern around moratorium of school closure includes things like what is considered school closure? Is it if a school is being repurposed to be used for different grade levels? If you switch the grade levels being educated in buildings, is that a, a change? It gets to a level of um decision-making that really is uniquely that of a school district board to make those decisions. And I think providing, again, sort of maybe it's guardrails for what that process must consider would be important. But injecting the state by virtue of legislation or our responsibility into that decision-making, I would feel concerned that um we buy ourselves more problems. But I am really appreciating that we are carving out the problem, that we keep, we're starting, we see what the genesis of it was. What we get is stuff that we're supposed to solve that is creating more problems than answering the actual problem that was the genesis of the request. So I'm sorry if I went all the way in circles, but I see Donna's hand too.
No, no.
Sure she's gonna.
Yeah.
Where I messed up.
So I, I think, just to play this back, Kim, I think, and, and a little bit of Tammy and Kim. Let me see if I have this right. I think what I'm hearing you both say in slightly different ways is that having some common standards that school districts must utilize when making decisions about grade reconfigurations or outright school closures is something that would benefit. I, I wouldn't personally, I don't want the State Board to be in, in a role of adjudicating that at all. But having some standards, um you know, whether it's in statute or whether it's in, in, in rules uh that, you know, these are the rules of the road. They apply to everybody. They're designed to protect the competing interests of, you know, small communities who really value their, their local schools with um, you know, that the, the reality that, that doesn't always translate into high-quality educational opportunities for kids, right? And there is a, there's a, there's a tension there. So does something like that make sense? Donna, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to add that although m- most issues surrounding school closure are likely to arrive in the context of a small town within a much larger multi-town union school district, this could conceivably arise in any school district that, that operates more than one school for a particular grade. So for example, these same kinds of issues could be raising, being raised in Burlingdon if it chose to close one of its neighborhood elementary schools. So the, the, the concept of what, what goes into a decision to close um a school building i- is really beyond, it goes much broader than just a question of those particular governance situations where it's possible for one member to withdraw.
So that's a great point, and I think that speaks to the complexity of all these issues. And, and given how much time is left in legislative session, I, I think at this stage, it would be unrealistic to, to find a really truly elegant uh solution of this. Which is why, is to say that, you know, perhaps the best path forward is, is uh some, you know, like a summer study committee that can really look at um the, the governance issues over here or associated with withdrawal and, and then these school closures issues separately. So to allow for a little bit more, you know, time and reflection to get it right and, and come back with some uh, a good proposal next year. Secretary French and then Kim.
Yeah, thanks. Um, you know, firstly, I just wanna thank Donna for her work. I'm sure you're aware her, her contributions are significant in this area. Yeah, um but also just underscore, um her role has largely been from a technical standpoint. So you know, just to sort of lay this out in a, in a sort of a larger framework at the beginning of the session, we introduced the rewrite to chapter 11, which is largely technical corrections, non-controversial political or uh technical corrections, non-political uh or policy-related issues based on our experience with Act 46 largely. And, and Donna, you know, has been directly involved in drafting that work. Simultaneously, um the board was introducing some concepts on, I'll call it the divorce process. And uh we, we lent Donna to help you uh do that. But we've always been very careful to say, the board is championing this. This isn't a policy perspective of the agency necessarily, though Donna Russo Savage just happened to be present in both of these technical conversation. On the one hand, chapter 11 rewrite, divorce conversation, policy change, board's idea. Donna serving as a technical person to help bring that into, into action. So now we're at a point, to your observation, Oliver, at the end of the session, where, you know, people are starting to realize the implications of some of these things. I'm happy to become involved in those issues and as I often am as secretary as we get closer to the end of the session where policy decision- where policy decisions need to be made or, or policy input needs to be given. That's not necessarily Donna's role. So I just call that out. If there is an opportunity for becoming involved in this, I'd welcome the opportunity to do so. I am scheduled to testify, it must be tomorrow, on facilities and it's in the, in the con, construct of facilities that I talked about, school district quality standards previously. You know, it's interesting to know that a lot of that conversation is not necessarily about school closure, but conditions upon which schools would remain open. And I think increasingly that's going to be of an interest to the state. You know, just in the conversation this morning with Lincoln, you know, we started to get into issues of enrollments and, you know, declining enrollment and the cost implications and so forth. And we're all, I think, familiar with those demographic challenges, but I think of equal interest needs to be the quality implications for this context, meaning, you know, can small schools or smaller schools that operate on smaller economies of scale, to what extent can they maintain reasonable levels of quality? And that's, that's going to be increasingly interesting to the state to pursue. And I think we have, we have a mechanism, I think, possibly on the table in terms of introducing school district quality standards. And they were into relationship with education quality standards to kind of get at some of these issues. But, you know, there's only so many hours left in the legislative session. So I applaud everyone for their work in this regard and happy to get more involved. But this is beyond technical changes. This is really getting to a meat of some pretty significant policy issues. So.
Yep. No, totally understood. Kim? Still muted.
Sorry, I get some like notification in the corner that somebody's coming in or leaving and then I can't see anything. Sorry about that. Teams and I are not the best of friends. I just wanted to clarify what I'm understanding, Oliver, that perhaps, are we suggesting that they're, they may not finish this version of withdrawal legislation as it would wait for study of school closure? Or that we would advocate for the adoption of legislation that clarifies the withdrawal process generally allows us to take action on things like the Stowe situation? I mean, in that absence, we are, we are hamstrung to do anything differently than we're doing currently. So I, my hope would be we would get some clarity on that, but then do some additional study that if it were to later change how we operate with respect to withdrawals and certainly provide clarification on closures. I don't, I just want to, I'd be, I'm worried.
Yeah, no, no. What I'm, yeah, it's a great question. So what I'm suggesting is that if, if it looks like there won't be sufficient time to get the details of the withdrawal process right. Perhaps the more prudent thing to do would be to put a moratorium on these withdrawals. Except Stowe is fairly straightforward. That can, that can move forward. There can be some session law that deals with that. But all other withdrawals, put, put a moratorium on that. And in the meantime, have some further study to really tease out these issues that we still don't. I mean, just like today, I raised the question of, you know, in the interim, what's the, what's the taxing authority? And, and the spending authority of a district? Like, I don't think there's been any discussion about that. And I was just sort of going through mentally, there's just so many more questions that continue to, to come out. And it, it's starting to feel like there needs to be a bit more study on this issue. And we just don't have enough time to do that. So a moratorium on, on these, with these withdrawals in general, particularly the, the complicated ones, some study. But also as part of that study, looking at what we're doing with, with school closure issues and how we can separate that out from this governance so that when we finally resolve all this and we get back into, you know, a model where there is a path for withdrawal, we're, we also have a better path to deal with these questions of school closure so that they don't get pulled in and wrapped around the, the governance changes. Does that make sense? Tom and then, oh, Kim, you're on mute, but Tom and then we'll go back to you. Kim?
Yeah, thanks. So just to be really specific, so what does this mean for the schools that we have already considered? And, and I, and I, and I asked this question too. Does this mean anything for, for Ripton and for the timeline that we have set for these districts that are in the process of putting the work thus far? What would a moratorium mean for them?
So I think the, the, the less complicated ones, so those would be, you know, the, the Westminster's, et cetera. You know, they're, they're already well on a path forward. They'll, they'll be operational as of July. It's, it's the ones who are withdrawing from a supervisory district and have no home for supervisory union. Those are the really challenging ones. And so I would include Ripton in that mix because I, I have, based on what I've seen thus far, I don't see how there's a path for them to be operational next July. The, the, the clock is running out fast. So I get, I'm really nervous that, you know, come August, the district that they're leaving is going to start preparing their budget for next year. And they're preparing a budget that doesn't include Ripton. And Ripton's going to come to the realization that they have, they, they can't actually function. And then what happens? I mean, the fact that Ripton, as of I think, present moment, and I, I see Sue Saglowski's on the line. So perhaps she can help inform this conversation, but the last information I had was that they had, they can't even secure a consultant to help with the organization of their, of their, their district. And it's April 20th. Kim?
I was, I think, I think maybe the Tom's question and where we sit currently lends itself to having them arrive at something. I feel like it's going to be pretty unsatisfying for these that are in process to not have a path forward that we can either take action on or not. Like, I, I, for exactly the reason you just described, Oliver, I think, I think we're in a bind if they were to avoid the, the topic of withdrawal reform. We can call it. I don't really know that that's, you know, been a term of art that's been used anywhere. But we, we are ill-equipped with the tools we have in current law to address this. Then rewrite of chapter 11 points to a rewrite of this section to provide different or better tools. So I guess it would point to a moratorium and be, but then I would hope it would also give a session law on those that are in process.
The, the ones that are in process that are well on their way and have a clear path forward, for sure. I just, I don't see that, I don't see Ripton having a clear path forward unless anybody else thinks differently.
Unfortunately, we've said yes, and we've given them a date by which to do it. So I think that the default position is that they're going to be not set up for success in the outcome. So again, I hope, I do hope their study on the root of the problem. And I do hope that there is some improvement on what we have currently to, to deal with. I'm almost feeling as though for those who are believing withdrawal to be in their future to have no ability to do anything about that might be less palatable than working with the language we have and improving upon that. But again, I couldn't begin to speculate on the politics of the matter. I just, so much has been done. It might be unfortunate to lose, lose it. But I appreciate the promise of better understanding the problems that bring people to these decisions.
And I guess that's where I was coming from, Kim. In that I would hope that the legislature would do something, something to make things better in the interim and study away during the summer, but to give us something to work with for the people who have undergone this process to this point. Yeah, I would, I would hope that we would be able to get something by the end of the session.
I'm seeing a lot of heads nods. That's good, good input. Donna, you've got your hand up.
Not to complicate things more, and I'm not quite sure how this would all work, but a moratorium wouldn't necessarily preclude Ripton or Lincoln from continuing to plan. It might, in the long run, end up pushing off the operational date beyond where Ripton is thinking its operational date is. But it could be written in a way that wouldn't necessarily preclude them from continuing to try to figure out how they will, how they would go forward.
That's a great point, Donna. And I think that would also help inform some of the studies. So as this is being studied further, more lessons, you know, develop. Okay, Jennifer, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm in a car. So I had a couple of thoughts. I mean, one is I think it is really important to amend the statute so that there is parity between the withdrawal of a unified union school district and a union school district. And I think it might be worth also going back to say Lincoln and Ripton to ask them directly. Is what's driving their desire to, you know, form their own school district, supervisory district? Really because they're trying to avoid the school closure. And then, you know, to Donna's point, you know, maybe they could agree to a moratorium to suspend their activities while we kind of work this out with the legislature. So just a couple of thoughts.
Donna, I see you've got your hand up and then probably should wrap this up. I think I've got a, an overall sense of the board here.
Sorry, I'm having trouble taking it down. I meant to take it down.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Jennifer, your hand went back up. I assume you were trying to take it down as well. I think she's on mute. Okay. Already moving on to Tom, if item K, if you could provide us with a, a brief update on the work of the, the independent school approval committee.
Yes. Quick update. We were charged by working with the agency to identify a list of schools for desk review. This question is not essential or maybe even helpful, although the added flexibility might be helpful in some cases, but there are added touchpoints for the schools, not as robust to review. It's sometimes even slower. The only schools right now that the agency is suggesting might be candidates for a desk review and for goal to visit would be the kindergartens, the four kindergartens, which are all approved by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And those non-special education schools or programs that are seeking minor amendments to their application. But really, there's not a lot of demand for this at this point. So that was the, the first charge that we had. We did take a look at a draft of the assurances that schools will be asked to attest to. There are four in the draft. One is the nondiscrimination assurances, the Public Accommodations Act for admissions and operations. The other three are health and safety for fire drills, immunizations and overall health and safety. And so those, those are in draft stage. I don't know if Emily has updated information about that draft, but that's the draft that we saw last week. The communication plan we, we talked about last meeting has a couple of phases. One, there should, there should be a communication going out to schools about the rule changes. And that should go out as soon as possible so that the agency can provide proactive technical assistance to those schools. And then the assurance draft will be sent to three classifications of schools. One are those that have submitted their application, have completed the review and visit. And they will simply be sent the assurances as an addendum to their application and they'll sign, sign those. The second are those who have submitted their application but have not been reviewed or visited yet. They will also sign those assurances as an addendum to their application. And those assurances will be part of the visit and review when that happens. And the third group are those who are not currently in the review process. And so when they submit their application, either initial or renewal, these assurances will be part of that, that application process. We spent a long time talking about the schedule for our work. And it looks like we'll have 10 schools ready for, for August, maybe, maybe a little bit more than that. And then the pace going forward, given the agency staff and the work involved in these reviews. We'll extend this work over a, a number of years actually to, to get rid of the backlog. But we did come up with two questions and I don't know if Emily is available to give us her opinion. One option for clearing the backlog is simply to start reviewing schools five years from the date of their last, the, the last approval expired. So those approved up until 2020 will be up for approval again in 2025. That's a lot of work for agency staff. We're not sure it's even doable. Another suggestion would be to make it a six-year date of expiration. So we don't know if that is allowable under statute, but that would be more, more reasonable for agency staff. But we're not sure that it's allowable under statute. And the second question comes from the state auditor's report, whether the five-year approval process currently in place is a forward-looking five years or a backward-looking five years? So forward from the date of our action or backward from the date of their last approval? So I don't know if Emily has question, answer to those questions, but that's a, that's a high-level update of where we are.
Great. Emily, you want to take a stab at those?
Sure, I'd be happy to as quickly as possible. The five-year limit on approval is given to the state board in statute. So you do not have authority to exceed that five-year term. The second question is, how do you calculate that five years? The statute is not specific in your rules. Your new rules or your old rules are not specific. The real concept that I want folks to remember is that all five years have to go somewhere. You have to conceptually treat them as either inclusive of the time the school sort of waited to have its review complete or start the clock before the end of that five years backward looking and consider no more than five years from the point of the review being complete. So you can't, in other words, when we internally reviewed this question last week after the committee meeting, you can't have any time that's neither a backward-looking prior approval or a forward-looking new approval. All time's got to be somewhere and neither one can go over five years.
Tom, does that help?
A, a little bit. Emily, your understanding of the, of the way we currently currently operate the time clock, is, is it forward-looking or backward-looking?
It looks like practice has varied and has not been uniform. So we discussed as agency staff, what would be most helpful in facilitating, you know, working through the backlog really quickly? That's not clear yet, and that won't be my call. That'll be the independent school teams' call in conjunction with the committee. My decision was strictly what I told you before. It's got to be only five years.
Okay, that, that's helpful. We'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Tom, can you explain again? So if a school is not currently up for renewal or approval, they don't need to provide assurances and we're going to, they, so the standards for receiving tuition have changed.
Will change.
That may impact their, well, right.
We're gonna get through Elkar.
Get it through, I, Elkar, right? The second one, Elkar. Eventually it'll get through that. So at the time that that has happened, all schools, it all schools, it, you know, the, the special education rules have a delay in their implementation. But the eligibility to receive public funds, from what I understand, is effective on passage, which would mean there may be schools not up for approval, but may or may not meet the standards to receive public tuition. And consequently, do we pay public tuition if they've not complied with those standards? Do we believe that if they had previously otherwise complied, their assurances would be adequate? There were, there was a tremendous body of work that happened to articulate the difference between approved and approved to receive public tuition. And I understand that to provide, affect everybody at the time we pass it. So.
So my understanding, and Emily or Secretary French can, can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that all schools who have, who are currently approved to, who have completed their process will receive the assurances as an addendum to their, to their application. Those who, who are currently in the process, but haven't had their review or visit, they will also sign those assurances. But then when the visit or review happens, those assurances will be part of that review or visit. We're not asking for another review or visit for those who are already approved, operating under their previous approval. And then going forward, as you enter the review process, these assurances will simply be part of the application.
So the first group you talked about, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. So they're not up for renewal approval or otherwise. They are going to get an addendum that addresses any new criterion related to eligibility to receive public funds. They don't need another site visit, but I think that we should be thorough in making sure that what we're asking of those that aren't up and that we're providing an addendum to reflects everything. And it might be a different form than those who are in the process of review because their assurance section might be, I forget specifically those things we said they need to attest to in those rules, but would otherwise be part of their application if they were applying for approval. We should double check that what we're asking to receive public funds for those that aren't up for renewal reflects what maybe wasn't part of the application before, but it's important to be eligible to receive public tuition. I can't remember if that's different than just attesting.
So I think the, I think the, and Emily again is, is on the call. I think the, the draft that she has is assigned by the head of school and an assurance that they, they comply with the four four assurances that have been added to independent school approval. And those are for all the schools that are not, that have already completed the review and visit on the previous. We're not asking them to submit another application, but we are asking them to attest to these four statements.
And maybe Emily can just confirm that that captures everything that is required to be eligible to receive public funds.
So Kim, it wouldn't require any of the criteria that make a school eligible to receive public funds because the differentiation between publicly funded and just approved but ineligible to receive public fund becomes effective on July 1, 2023.
So that's true. Okay, so that is not just for special education. So that distinction in its entirety becomes effective July 1, 2023? Okay. Okay.
I know that folks are most concerned with the assurances around public accommodation, safety and compliance with statutes that apply just in general to approved independent schools. Those in your new rules take effect upon adoption and applied to both categories of school once we have categories next year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else, Tom, committee?
I'll, I'll just, I'll just mention that if I do my calculation correctly, in that, not organizing the work of, of the agency at all, but just a pacing, we won't have the, the backlog of what we currently have cleared until maybe February of 2024. And that's not counting the 2020, the group that, who expires in 2023. So it's a, it'll be a long road out.
So then between now and then, because we'll have time, for those that aren't up for renewal for July 1, 2023, there may be a different form that deems them eligible to receive public funds that isn't a full reapplication, but it captures the essence of all that's required if they are to receive public funds.
That, that, that was my, that's why I mentioned that, because it will go past 2023.
Thank you. And that'll, I'm sure be something that gets out to them in ample time for them to be responsive so that districts know whether or not they can send money.
Yeah, they, the agency staff said they were gonna get something out as soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. So I do see we, we have a couple of folks on the line from the Essex Westford School District. I apologize, we're running just a little bit behind. We have one more item to get through, so if you can bear with us for a few minutes, hopefully we can get through the next item pretty quickly. Excellent. So Jennifer, I know you're in transit, so would it be helpful if I kind of framed up where we're at with the 2200 series rules and then could take questions? Jennifer, you're on mute. I don't, there you go.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question that you asked me.
I was going to suggest that I could sort of provide the update with where things are at with 2200, since you're in, in transit and then you can take any questions. Does that, does that help you?
Sure. I mean, can't vouch for the quality of my connectivity, but I will do my best.
Okay, no worries. And Emily and I, I'm sure can help. Already, so a brief update on where we're at with Rule Series 2200. As I, I sent an email to the board a few weeks ago, we discovered upon our submission to Elkar that there was a, a difference in how some of the deadlines were calculated, which necessitated a formal request for an extension, which I submitted in, in my capacity as the board chair to Elkar. That request was heard and granted at their last meeting. But they did defer action until their meeting tomorrow on on the, on the rules themselves. There have been a few individuals who have written to Elkar and have formally objected or have encouraged Elkar, I should say, to, to object to the rules. And I've, I've reviewed that correspondence as, I know Jennifer and Emily have as well. So the plan is Jennifer and Emily will be before Elkar tomorrow to answer, answer questions. We know that Legislative Council has reviewed the rules. They've identified a few, a few typographical issues and potentially one question around statutory authority with respect to the Public Accommodations Act. So one thing I was going to suggest is that the board grant Jennifer a little bit more authority to make changes in response to any requests that come out of, of Elkar to, to make amendments. And Emily, keep me honest here, but I believe, you know, the one potential issue is around the Public Accommodations Act and whether our rules go beyond our legislative grant of authority with respect to the Public Accommodations Act. There is an argument that the Public Accommodations Act in very specific situations may not apply to all schools all the time. That is not a universally held view. So it, it's the view of, you know, Emily has advised us in the past that Public Accommodations Act applies to independent schools. The Human Rights Commission is of the view that it applies to all schools. And the Attorney General's Office has weighed in on this in the past and is also the view that it applies to, to all schools as well. Or independent schools, I should say, as well as public schools. But there is another argument that could be advanced. It may not apply. So there's potentially a little bit of a question on that. Emily, did I capture that accurately?
You absolutely did. And I didn't know if you wanted me to sort of fill in the rest about where that might leave us in terms of the scope of change that might be brought in. It's in a pretty small scope in terms of any suggested rewrites or redrafting to that section of the rules. So first of all, I would say the board's not received notice of any objection to its rule as has been filed. This is a hypothetical conversation based on something that could possibly happen tomorrow morning at Elkar. So the scope of change that we're anticipating or the conversation that we're anticipating is around couching the application of the Public Accommodations Act within your rule with phrases that might be like, to the extent applicable or to the extent that they apply. Those are the, the kind of suggestions that have been very, very lightly suggested to just me as an attorney drafting for the board. At this point, no one has asked for that change to be made in any formal way.
So what, what I'm going to ask is for the, oh, sorry, Kim, go ahead.
Thanks, Oliver. So I struggle with that a little bit. If the advice that we've received from many sources is that it applies to schools. And frankly, I listened in to some of the Legislative Council reflection on this topic. Legislative Council, Jim Demery, seemed to suggest that if access were limited or membership were limited, then maybe it didn't. But I don't understand how that can apply if students are attending as, through a public school LEA program. I, I can't understand how it's limited if students are coming with their public dollars. So it, it doesn't, I certainly am more of the mind that we've received legal counsel that these apply. So I'm concerned about leaving it ambiguous to the extent they apply. I'm just not, I'm not sure what that gains us in anybody knowing how to apply the rules.
All good points. And I would suggest we wouldn't want to make a change unless we were specifically requested to. So this is to Emily's point, this is a hypothetical. But if the committee feels that we have exceeded our statutory authority, they can, that's grounds to object to the rules. And we would either need to make a change and bring it back to them or advance the rules without their endorsement. And there's danger in doing that. One, we would upset the legislature for sure. Number two, the rules have, don't have quite the same effect. And the standard for judicial review is different if it does not have that legislative blessing. Emily, keep me honest if I've got that wrong.
Did, so can I understand a little bit more, Oliver, than, so we have AG opinion, the AOE's opinion, the Human Rights Commission's opinion? What additional opinion, like, where is the opinion other than Legislative Council, Demery's reflection that is conclusive that it doesn't apply?
Keep in mind, this is a committee that can come to its own decision based on the information it has available. So they could, as a committee, choose to defer to their own counsel or defer to the other opinions that are, that are out there.
Okay, thanks for explaining that process. The other question we have, if it's, if it's an okay time for it, is not about public accommodations, but it's about the three submitted comments to ICAR, some of which we saw through our process. Like reflected similarly to what came up in our process. And I know as one who was on that subcommittee, we understood that the rate and reimbursement situation had been negotiated separately, and it really wasn't something that our subcommittee considered in a particularly critical way because it was determined to have been otherwise settled by subcommittee working group. And so I'm not necessarily suggesting we can fix that now. I think it'd be important for us to monitor that moving forward. But there were other reflections that I think did not represent our intent. And one was that somehow in the, in the way the law would look at what we've done, we would be in conflict with the law to be reducing standards for students on IAPs, which was never anything that I recall our committee having the, the intent at all. And Tom and, and Jennifer, you can sort of keep me honest too. And Emily, that, that wasn't even like an ever at issue. And I know we had many areas that we worked closely with Milmore and VISA to make sure we were understanding each other clearly. And, you know, we didn't always agree on everything. I just don't think the intent with our rules and their language was to reduce standards for students on IAPs. And I think if, I would be concerned if our rules represented that to people who take these rules and implement them, or to those who are students protected by the law would see it to be different in our rules. And so for that, I would think if that's something we should change, that feels like it isn't what we intended.
No, and I don't think that, that is, it's certainly not what we intended, and it's not the effect of the rules. But Emily, so that this, I think you're, Kim, you're speaking about the, the concern about conformance with the, with the IDEA. And, and Emily has looked into that. I think, Emily, perhaps you could comment on that?
My response to that is that our system of accountability to, to students' entitlements to special education still, in these rules, as always, go back to their public LEA's oversight of that entitlement, their IP team formulating their, their IP, their services that they're going to receive, and then a contractor relationship for the independent school to deliver those services, or some blend. The rules allow for direct delivery by LEA staff in some cases in combination with contracted service delivery. So the most important thing that is constant is that a student's IP is written and overseen by their LEA, regardless of which individuals actually end up interacting with them to deliver those services.
Is there anything in our language, like why did our language seem to imply differently to the Is there anything in our language, like, why did our language seem to imply differently to those who offer, those who actually implement these rules? Or have had concern, like, what is it about our language? Is there anything we can clarify in our language? Because I'm consistent with your interpretation. I just am not a practitioner. And if something about the way our language presents does not reflect as you're describing to those who would understand their relationship with the law, then is there a language that improves that? Because I don't think our intent is inconsistent with what they're suggesting or what you just described. I just don't know. It's technical and I don't know.
And Kim, I think what your question would ask me to do is speculate about where those comments were coming from. And I don't know. I'm not the person who submitted them. So I really can't speak to what they thought or perceived.
I think I recall, and I don't have it in front of me, to be somewhat specific about where they thought it was running afoul of, or what it seemed to say that was inconsistent with the law. But I, I'm sorry, I'm going to try and pull it, but I just don't know. I just felt pretty clearly with all the hours we spent and Tom and Jennifer please, like, weigh in. If, I just didn't think what they were suggesting as concern and conflict with the law was ever anything we intended.
No, it certainly wasn't. And it's not the effect. And perhaps I can answer this in a different way. And so I think the concern was over some specific language in the old rules that was stricken. That was the concern that was raised, that the specific concern. And that the effect of doing that would somehow weaken the rules. I would point out that the same individual who submitted that comment also was the person in charge of the drafting back in 2016. And that draft also struck the very same words.
So, yeah, thank you.
If I may, and I think there are a number, it seems to me there are a number of issues that, on which comments have been submitted. What I noticed was from a couple of different sets of comments is perhaps, to Kim's point, there are some places where the language may be perceived as different than what was intended. And I'm just wondering whether or not there is some space for a systematic conversation, maybe among the subgroup that worked on this, to just go through those things and see. Because I think it's bigger than just this standards issue. There are some things, and I know some of that language got rolled over from what was actually in Act 173 into the rules. But, you know, there may be some questions about whether or not the language that's in Act 173 is consistent with IDEA as well. So I guess my question is more process. I think it's hard for us as a group on teams to sort of try to go through all of this right here. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to have just a conversation among the subgroup that worked on this, have a conversation to go through those things systematically, just as a circle back and see if there's an opportunity here where we might be able to tighten things in one or two places to clarify. Because I've heard all of people that worked on this saying like, this is really hard and the goal was to get it right. And if it's being perceived differently than what it was intended. So my question is about process. Do we have a chance to do that?
Sorry, we're picking up a lot of background noise there. I don't know where that was coming from. But I got the essence of what you're saying there, Tammy. So I think it's a good suggestion. And, you know, and again, we've been very clear that, you know, there's going to be, you know, phase two of this rulemaking and there's an opportunity to address those, these questions there. I think that we need to, sorry, there's somebody.
It's probably me, Oliver. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay. Yes, okay, got it.
So it's Jennifer. I am. So my thought, I mean, these are very good questions that have been raised. I think my response would be that a lot of this language was drafted in the first instance by the Act 173 Advisory Group, which, you know, I kind of look at as the extra rule who represent a variety of competing interests. So, I mean, I think reasonable minds will probably always disagree with how these rules landed. And did we get it exactly right? Maybe not. I think there's always an opportunity in phase two to revisit anything that sort of teases out as problematic, but, or, I mean, not even problematic, but, you know, areas that we could, you know, try to make better, clearer, whatever. But I do think it's important that there were, you know, 14 different entities that were represented in the Act 173 Advisory Group that really came at these issues from a variety of angles. And I think they all felt comfortable with the language that we ultimately agreed upon. And so that means something to me. You know, when the subcommittee went through and adopted the recommendations and, you know, that we as a state board voted our approval on them.
And I think that's a great point, Jennifer. And those are, you know, that group includes active practitioners, right? So I think we should deferentially, not entirely, but certainly, you know, give some deference to their. So I would suggest let's see how things go tomorrow with LCAR. You know, I think that's the first question. But back to the public accommodations, because we do need to wrap this up so we can hear from our friends from Essex Westford. Back to the public accommodations, because I think that's going to be, based on the conversations Emily's had with Legislative Council, that really is, I think, where we may need to be prepared to make some adjustments. And it would be helpful if Jennifer, on behalf of the board, could be authorized to make necessary conforming changes to address those concerns. Does that make sense to everybody? Kim?
I'm sorry, I have a real problem with putting in the ambiguity if it applies. I think that entirely will land in an inconsistent application. And I think that is not at all the intent and it is fundamental to the work that we did together. And so we sought the necessary understanding to craft the rules in the way we did. I would prefer to see that reviewed if there is, if they somehow feel differently. And I would not necessarily think deferring to one legal opinion versus many before seeking further legal opinion and making that change. I think it very much so dilutes the intent of the work that we put together. So again, to Tammy's process question, I don't, I don't really know what that means. But I just don't think that.
Hey, Jennifer, we're picking up a lot of background noise.
Okay. Well, I was going to speak up, but.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and speak up. Yep.
And then I'll mute myself again. So, I mean, my thought is, to the extent it applies, in a way, I mean, I would almost argue that it's superfluous because if it doesn't apply, then it's not applicable. And if it does apply, then it is applicable. And, you know, my guess is that however we, you know, ultimately land on the language, someone is probably going to want to test that theory in court and we can't control that. So I, I'm not disturbed by adding in the language because I'm not convinced that it says anything more or less than what we have in there right now. It just, you know, calls it out in a way that makes alleged counsel comfortable. And if that's what we need to get us over the edge to, you know, get the approval of LCAR, then I wouldn't have a problem adding it. If we don't need to add it, I wouldn't add it. But I don't have a problem adding it if we have to.
And let's just to briefly test this out, Kim, right? If we add that language, if applicable, our position is that it applies to all schools. So when we're going through the approval process of a school comes forward and they try to say, well, we don't think it applies, we're going to say, sorry, our reading is it applies and we're not going to approve you. Then the only, you know, then they would have, essentially to Jennifer's point, test that out in court. But this all may become moot because the legislature is actively considering resolving this question through a statutory change. And again, if it's changed in the statute to say, you know, remove any ambiguity, the language, you know, is still fine. Jenna and then, Emily, did you just want to add a clarifying point? And then why do you do that? And then we'll go to Jenna.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that in your example you just gave, Oliver, that would be hypothetically on a given set of facts. If a future state board voted by majority to say, our opinion is that your application is unsatisfactory, then you could have that, though. I don't think that you're prejudging any application that might come through in the future.
Absolutely. Jenna?
I was going to say what Kim said. And then I was thinking that I would maybe change that opinion, but I'm circling right back to agree with what Kim said. And I think the, for me, if applicable, what is the standard for being applicable? And people, I guess if there's not a standard there.
But there is. If it's in statute, it's applicable as in statute. So that's why. So we're running out of time here.
Are we saying that it's excluded? So I don't even know how we operationalize that. If applicable means what? They get to decide themselves?
No, 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 no. As, as statute applies.
Right. And we're saying we have legal opinion that it does.
Exactly.
So I'm just trying to understand then, Emily, how are we not prejudging? If they were to present this set of facts to us, that they said, we don't comply and we don't think we have to, how do we operationalize that with the, to the extent it applies by whose standards we have opinions that tell us we believe they apply?
And you are state board members who sit on the board now and you vote on each unique application that comes before you, whether you agree that that application satisfies the rules you laid forward for approval. Right? So you would not have, I'm just reiterating that you take each application on its own merits, not as, like, it rules about what you would and would never do as a board into the future, right? So I'll just read to you, I think it might just clarify if everybody is refreshed on what the rule currently says. It says, demonstration in the school substantially complies with all statutory requirements for approved independent school with documentation of the following. And the relevant part here is a statement of non-discrimination that is consistent with the Vermont Public Accommodations Act and the Vermont Fair Employment Practices Act. So your rule that you included in your final proposal is couched in terms of complying with the law as it exists on the books.
And so if we were to then add to the extent it applies, isn't that, I'm not understanding how that solves the problem with what we think may be raised for the reasons, almost for exactly the reasons that Jennifer and Oliver offered, that it's superfluous, it's not a big deal, add it. To me, it's a loophole when we add it. We understand our intent. We've said above as required in law and we say what those laws are. I'm not sure why we would add language that offers the opportunity for a change in intent. You know, let them argue it if they don't complete that section of the application and Tom goes back and says, you're required to complete that section of the application.
The language, to the extent applicable, is also, in my opinion, superfluous. It does not generate a different outcome than the language that you already have. And the language that you already have could certainly be challenged by a hypothetical school that would say, we are submitting application materials that are consistent with the Vermont Public Accommodations Act because it doesn't have any import for our operations. Right? So that's why I think that the language is superfluous. But it's really important to some people who, or it could be really important to some people who get a say in whether these rules go forward or not because they probably have a different perspective.
And I guess, and I don't mean to be so argumentative, but I think it's important. It is there for the reasons that we had, we had, we sought the legal opinions, put it there because we thought it important. And so my question remains, and it's, I just put it out there for us to wonder why, for those for whom that language is important. If we see that it has no impact, why is it important to them? And why is that more important than what we thought the intent of this language was supposed to do? And so I caution us strongly to making that accommodation. And I really hope that, as you've described it, Emily, they understand the intent with it. And I'm not quite sure why we would accommodate with superfluous language and why that somehow garners us their approval. So I'm sorry to sound so exasperated. We've invested so much time in it. And I think that was at the crux of a big body of work that we did.
Rather than say as applicable, Emily, what if we were to say as required by statute?
It wouldn't put us in a position of negotiating against ourselves, first of all. But yeah, that might also be an acceptable solution, depending on who you are.
Kim, would that, would that help?
It's less offensive to me personally, which is not about whether or not it offends me personally. It strikes me as what we were saying. We are unambiguous about how we see the statute speaking to this matter. And we've indicated it above. So it maybe seems less subjective because we are directing it right back to statute and we've sought interpretation for its application. And they can find it in the conversations as documented through these meetings.
And we've also testified before the legislature, to the extent that there is any ambiguity, the board would support clarifying that in statute so that it's clear that it applies to everybody.
And you made clear, Oliver, that we had sought the necessary legal opinion and that our expectation as we crafted this was that it does apply. And I was very appreciative of that testimony to have them here directly from us, how we came about our language and our position. So thank you. Yeah, that's better for me. If we have to do any of it. But to Emily's point, let's not negotiate against ourselves. I think we've framed that section through the lens of statute. So I feel comfortable with the way we went about it. But thanks.
Jenna, are you comfortable with that as well? Okay, excellent. Tammy?
I feel like a broken record here, but I do, maybe I haven't quite understood. But I want to, I do want to circle back to process. In reading some of the technical comments that we got with respect to, I guess, from special education professionals, I do wonder whether or not there are opportunities there that we should be looking at for clarification. And if that's part of phase two, I think it would be really useful to be able to say that to LCAR tomorrow, that we have a process where we're going to be looking at this and that this is an iterative process. But also being clear that we, sort of, we're going to take this up in some systematic way in the coming months. I know we have a committee already that's going to be looking at implementation. I think this might be a little different and I don't know if it goes back to our group we have now or we need another group. But I do feel strongly enough to say, I do think that some of those comments are worth taking a little closer look at, just putting on my special ed policy hat and saying there are some things in there that maybe we will want to be explicitly responding to in a phase two. And sort of noting that to LCAR tomorrow would be really helpful, I think.
I think that's a fair suggestion. I just do want to push a little bit. I don't think, I could be wrong, but I don't think we've received any comments from active practitioners.
I was talking, referring to Joanne Andres's comments.
I think she's retired.
She, you're right, she is retired, but she was the president of VSCAI and is quite well respected in the field with respect to her practitioner expertise. And I take those comments as potentially a little less political in nature. And I very much would like the opportunity for us to just work through those in a systematic way.
Okay, I just, I'm just conscious of the fact that we have the current president is also the chair of the 173 group. And I just, I'm trying to avoid continuing to go through this. It's been a very long process and I'd like to bring it to an end.
But that's why I suggested saying that this is an agenda point for phase two, right? You know, I don't, I don't think we're in a place of being able to do anything now. But as a part of what we have already acknowledged is that, you know, that policy is a process and there's, we need to be monitoring implementation and. and there's, we need to be monitoring implementation and looking for where these things continue to need to be updated. In addition to just catching, collecting data on implementation, I think sort of starting a catalog of these things that, that people are, that are percolating, and systematically reviewing them, and creating a list of other kinds of changes that may need to be made in a Phase Two would be really useful.
Yep, yep. No, I, I think that makes sense. As long as we're, I just don't wanna set the expectation that we're gonna start working on this tomorrow. This is a little, little off. We have a lot of other things going on, and I, I don't wanna set the wrong expectations. But I think it's fair to say, we're, we're, we're gonna be setting up a catalog, we're gonna be gathering information, data, feedback from practitioners. And, you know, we'll sort of build off of that in, in the future.
And in particular, if there are changes, yeah, and in particular, if there are inconsistencies in statute that present problems for us, then even though we may not be reopening these rules in the near term, flagging those for the General Assembly for next session would be useful.
Excellent. Alrighty, so we, I, I do wanna wrap this up. Does everybody feel comfortable with, with Jennifer, if necessary and only if necessary, having the authority to, to make that change that we suggested regarding a public accommodations act? Because if she has the authority to do that, we can much more quickly respond to LCAR, which means that the rules go into effect much sooner. Otherwise, we just continue to delay the enactment, which I'm really concerned about. Emily?
Your current deadline for adoption of these rules is May 2nd. That's your extension from LCAR.
As required by statute, it is. If necessary.
If necessary, okay, good. Any, any objections to that? Well, otherwise, I'll treat that as unanimous consent. And Jennifer, consider yourself authorized. Perfect, okay. So I apologize to our friends from Essex Westford, but we would love to hear from you about the work in your school district regarding equity broadly, and more specifically diversity, and, and inclusion. And Patrick, why don't you, I'll turn the, turn it over to you to facilitate introductions.
Thank you, Chair Olson, and it is my pleasure to welcome and introduce to you Marlon Mailer from, and from the Essex Westford School District, who is in turn going to introduce members of his staff. I must say an extra word of appreciation. He didn't mention, but I know he's on school vacation this week. So thank you for interrupting your vacation to join us here at the State Board of Education to present to us on your success stories, challenges, future projects, on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district. Mr. Mailer?
Thank you all for having me here. It's a pleasure. I would like to start first by introducing who's gonna do the bulk of this work, and it is our equity, our district-wide equity director, Ms. Erin McGuire. And I will support her specifically talking about the work that we're doing here at Essex High School. So Erin, please.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Patrick and Marlon. Nice to see many of you. I, I know several of you. Those that I don't know, I'm Erin McGuire. I am the Director of Equity and Inclusion for the Essex Westford School District, and grateful to be here with Marlon, who has been an incredible addition to our leadership team. This work is about our students, it is about our faculty and staff, and it certainly also is about leadership, including the district-wide leadership team, as well as our school board. I am planning on sharing a little bit with you about the district-wide work, and then we'll turn it over to Marlon to help you know and understand the work at the school level. But before I do, just need to check that I can actually share screen, and that you would prefer me to do that versus putting a, a presentation into the chat. So just wondering from kind of a logistical standpoint, what your preference is?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind sharing this, that's probably, probably the best thing.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume that I have that capability. Let's see. It's looking to me like I can't access my screen for screen sharing. Does that make any sense? Patrick, I don't know if you're the person that kind of manages that. I'm also happy to pop the presentation into the chat. If there's someone else who wants to share screen, and then I can simply go ahead and ask for the forward movement of the slide. Is that preferable, Patrick, to you? Okay.
Is that Ms. Prague? Is that Susan that handles that?
Yeah, yes.
No, hi, Erin. If you wanna put it in chat, I can, oh, there it is.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna break it off in a separate browser window, and then go to share screen in Teams, and then select that browser window that sometimes simplifies the process. But I'll, I'll work it on my end.
That'd be great, Dan. It's not, for some reason, it's not giving me access to my browser windows when I go to share right now. I'm not sure if that's on my end or not, but if you could open it up and share, that would be appreciated. It is not a long slide deck, and I'm happy to have, all of you have access to this as well. There are a number of links in this presentation that will provide you information. Before we jump too far in, though, I feel like one of the most important things to notice is that our students aren't here today. Our students are at the center of this work. They started the work, they continue to lead the work with us. And without them here, it just feels so important to sort of notice that they're not here. It is school vacation, and I would be happy, and I know Marlon would too, to make some connections with STEM students, to share the student experience, because the work that EWSD has done started in the context of a student-based retreat that identified our areas of focus. Those areas of focus have moved all the way from policy into action planning and back into the school level that Marlon is going to speak to. And so it really has come full circle for them to be able to describe the change in their own experiences in their classrooms with administration, the way the school district does this work. And so I, I think that a follow-up, should you ever be interested with students, would be amazing. So I just wanted to start there. Dan, how are we doing on the slide deck?
Yeah, I'm seeing that. Not, not too well, actually.
Yeah, I, I think there may be something going on. That's okay. I can just speak to it, and you all are welcome to go ahead and, oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Great. Okay, so we'll just start with that first slide, and you'll notice this is a conversation about the beginning of a journey. It has taken a very long time for institutions to get to where we are today. And so because of that, it will take us a long time to undo the inequities that we know exist in systems. If you wanna go to that first slide, I did want to start by noticing for you and with you that this work has been built by those who've dedicated their lives and careers to studying, living, understanding, and seeking to change inequities in our education systems. Our students, as I said, are central to the work, and in the words of Dr. Lou Val Brown, this work is about love. There's been a lot of division related to the conversation about equity. This work is about love, inclusion, and the value of differences in conversation. And we really do try to stay centered there. The policy background for you, just to make sure you know and understand that we have centered our work in a race-first lens. We start our policy work by making a statement related to recognizing the impact of racism in the United States, and that we would not be where we are today without the genocide of indigenous people, as well as the economic infrastructure that exists on the backs of Native African people who, and their descendants, who were brought here and, and kidnapped and, and brought here as free labor. So wanting to make sure that you all hear that that's a little bit different than when you look at the VSBA model policy. There is a very strong background in our policy related to the centering of our history, where, where the inequities began, and how we think about that going forward. So did just want to note those pieces. You can actually skip to Slide Four, Dan. This is just sort of the beginning, and wanting you to hear that our work is really primarily at the district level based in deep listening. My own identity plays into that, right? My own lived experiences are not within the confines of a substantial amount of inequity personally experienced. And so our deep listening across our leaders is really essential. We really revisioned as a school district early on where equity was centered through a Nellie May grant, where we were building a connection between communities and schools. And our new vision for EWSD centered equity. Our vision is growing hearts and minds for a better day and today and tomorrow, every day, every way, everyone. And so our work really started there. You can skip to the next slide, Dan. We actually were not sure that we were going to center a leadership role in the district office. This is everyone's work. And, and for the first couple of years, we actually just said, this is everyone's work. This is, we're not going to center this work in any one person. And what became really apparent is that there is an absolute need in districts to do what I actually describe as community organizing. So I work hard to help the work happen through people who want to lead the work, are engaged in leading the work, have the lived experience to lead the work. And, and then I do some leadership work myself at the district office. But ultimately, this is about all of us. We do, though, require dedicated funds specific to organizing the work. When you don't have a center organizer of the work, it becomes very difficult to stay on track. If you could skip to the next slide, Dan. This is a quote that I like to share when we try to talk about this work with others, because it is what we are trying to live in EWSD. That we have, I think it's about 83% of our population is white. We have a large number of students who have high socioeconomic status as opposed to struggling financially. And so it is important to recognize this is really about all of us. And the quote is this, "If you've come here to help me, you're wasting your time. But if you've come because your liberation is bound up with mine, then let us work together." And we really try to live that every day. Go ahead and skip to the next slide. Our student equity retreat centered us in four areas. I described that earlier. It was in 2020, when we brought, every student in the high school was invited. We had about 20 students attend, and they asked us to do four things in our equity work. They wanted curriculum change, they asked for a change in bias response, they wanted diversification of the educator workforce, and they wanted to hear different voices and stories of the most impacted by this work. If you wanna jump to the next slide. And so we centered our work in a nine-area action plan focused on hiring in human resources, auditing the curriculum, the equity reporting process, revisiting bias response, centering student leadership, considering the relationship with the police department, which is a deep body of work that's happened, professional learning in all kinds of ways, policy and decision-making, which is highlighted here because I want to share a little bit with you about how we got to our policy. It's an important part of the story before I hand it over to Marlon to talk about the school-based work. And then our community connections with our municipality, with our public libraries, with our police department, with our healthcare providers and mental health providers in our communities. Those are a critical piece as well. Next slide. This just talks about the role of the superintendent as a really central role in equity work. It is very challenging to do high-quality equity work if we do not have the support of the superintendent. And I know Marlon has some appreciations that he's going to deliver, and just wanted to note the appreciation of Beth Cobb, who is our superintendent, who allows this work to be possible. And it really is important that centering equity in all decisions, even when it's hard. You actually were just doing that. You were having a hard conversation about the applicability of Public Accommodation Act to public funds. That is a centering conversation around equity. Not applying that act to public funds creates inequity and access to public funds. And so it's an example of the kind of courage that's necessary. And so we really need to be able to call people in and also recognize our own contributions to inequities of the past. That's something I contend with. I've been a public education leader for a long time, over 20 years, and there are times where I have contributed. The courage to be public about those experiences, and also the courage to let students lead. And we need to trust in this work. We need to trust our students and our parents, and those who share stories, even when they're hard to hear. We are part of an institutional structure. It does not apply itself equitably at this time. We know that to be true. And to be able to trust those stories and not question beliefs about those stories or the experiences that people have is really important. All right, now, next slide. The policy that we have really began with an attempt to use the model policies in the, that have been developed by the Vermont School Boards Association. And what became really clear very quickly as we did that body of work is that it, our traditional policy development processes really do center some of the behaviors that actually embed inequity. And we really, we started to walk forward in our traditional ways of being in policy development, and we really had to back up, because we got feedback from members of our community that the policy work that was happening by those who typically do policy work was not representing the people that were most impacted. And so we had to engage in a new way forward. We worked with an affinity group and external facilitators to build a group of about 20 people who were of the global majority and had intersectionality of all different kinds of identities, disability, people who have historically lived in financial hardship, people who are multilingualistic and are still learning to speak English and interacting with our system that way. Those are the people that wrote this policy. And the passage of those words became the responsibility of the leadership of the district, and the board ultimately approved the policy. We had hard conversations, right? The term "critical race theory" began to surface. That's real. That is what we are contending with in these conversations. And there are all kinds of documents linked at the end of this presentation that give you access to some of the ways we had those conversations, and trying to continually re-center in the love of people who we are responsible to care for, support, and build systems that bring them to their potential. And so that was definitely a huge body of work. And grateful to the community members, the students who wrote those words in our policy, and helped us think forward into the future. I wanted to, you can go to the next slide. This is just a link to our equity policy, and I just wanted to pause here to share the goals of the policy. I'm just going to read from the policy itself. You're welcome to dive deep into it. It's about a four-page policy and has a number of definitions with it. This policy is to inform curriculum decisions, including anti-racist education and LGBTQIA+ affirming education, and disability, cultural, ethnic, religious, multilingualistic, and socioeconomic diversity awareness and representation for educators and our students beginning in pre-K. We are seeking to redefine our accountability procedures and frameworks to center transformation and redressing harm, to support and protect people in underserved marginalized positions while in school care, to ensure that family engagement is inclusive and centers the needs, experiences, and decision-making of people from communities who have been systemically and structurally oppressed, support and retain educators and administration and staff from marginalized groups, ensure school environments reflect, appreciate, welcome, and protect diverse personal, cultural expression and experiences through food, language, music, art, and clothing, inform how we will celebrate and recognize cultural practices to ensure that we have culturally agile, proficient, and responsive educators to create visibility and respect for all students in their educational settings and developmentally sensitive ways, and also that we will apply a transparent equity process to policies, procedures, and practices through the district in all decision-making and monitoring. Now, what we know is that you can write whatever you want. But if you don't live into this body of work, it doesn't change anything. And so with that, I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Marlon to describe some of the work at Essex High School around living into the policy. And Dan, you can stop sharing. Thank you so much for your help in making sure that that could be presented on screen. I appreciate it. Marlon?
Hi, thank you so much, Erin. I think you did an amazing job. And I really want to highlight one of the things that, that has been centered in the work here at Essex. And it is the policy drives the work, but the thoughtfulness around creating a policy that was all-inclusive. I think that is at the forefront of what has allowed us to do the work at the high school. And as, you know, Vermont and as the state moves forward, I just really want to highlight that it really has to be rooted in that policy that really pushes the work and the accountability piece, especially the data-driven aspects of it. Because a lot of equity lives in the data and understanding how that works. And sometimes inequity hides in those spaces as well. So I just want to name those things that you said. And as far as the school, I'm really proud of the work that has been done. And another big shout out to Beth Cobb, who comes up to the school constantly, communicates with us, is here with us doing the work. And I think that really can't be understated in this process of having a superintendent who is passionate about students and equity being lived out and always there to provide the resources that the school needs going forward. Some of the things that we're doing that we're so proud of is our biased panel response team. It's made up of students, it's made up of teachers and different stakeholders. When their incidents occur, we, we can't stop all incidents. But what we can do, we can learn from those incidents when they occur to make sure it doesn't happen again. And I think that is kind of really important to understand. Nobody's trying to be perfect or live in this perfectionism. But we are trying to make it right when things do occur. And that is a part of our growth process in working with young people. Another important process that we have going on is our restorative practice. We do a lot of work. We just hired two restorative coordinators who work along with assistant principals, who work along with the teachers to really change the culture of what does equity, what does relationship building means at the school level. Because we talk about equity, we use these terms, we talk about education, but honestly, it just comes down to relationship building. How are you relating one person to another? And that's where it takes practice, it takes work, it takes understanding. Because there are a lot of divides and rifts and things that push us apart. And we have to lean into and push into those things that bring us together, and that's through relationship building. Another thing that we're doing here, we have affinity groups that meet and talk and discuss these spaces. And in that process, affinity groups aren't just for our LGBTQ+ it just isn't for our black boys. It's also for our white students to learn how to have those conversations that are so impactful. Because they come in and they don't know. They don't know, how do I interact? How do I talk? How do I move in these different spaces? Because we don't want to send them out into the world and they're just unaware. So I think that's a big part of the affinity space and the affinity process as well. And our social justice union, they played a big part in our Black Lives Matter flag. They had a big process in bringing attention and awareness to things that are important to them, making sure that social justice lives throughout the school building. And the school teachers in terms of professional development, they've been working all year with Rebecca Haslam from San Marcos College in New York. There, where they fit in, where the curriculum fit in, and their biases are really working well together. So it's not just out there, it's not just something that's happening, you know, in the district office. The district office, Erin comes up to the school all the time to, to do the work here as well. Even in her travels at our other schools. So it's not just the district over here, the schools over here, the teachers over there. It really is a team effort that is student-centered in order to work on all our relationship building. And I want to thank you for this time.
Thanks, Marlin. I do think it's worth, since you brought up Dr. Haslam, to let you all know that an example of a way forward related to the first goal that I read around curriculum was to make sure every single teacher in the entire school district had a full six hours of training on auditing their own curriculum with an equity lens and having tools to do that and know how to do that and figure out how to recognize whose story are you telling? Who are the authors? Who are the, the characters depicted in our literature? Who are the scientists that are given credit for particular inventions or findings or new theories? How are we making sure that all of our students are seen in the, in the hero lens that we create so frequently in the stories that we tell as opposed to centering one identity or another? How do we think about the role of special education in the context of equity work and making sure that disability is a part of that conversation? I will share with you one of the most challenging areas that we're focused on is trying to figure out how to really reduce the impact of socioeconomic variability for our students as they intersect with access points in our school district. You know, we held an affinity space for people who had lived through financial hardship as it related to school interaction. They made a list of when and how they feel impacted by their socioeconomic status related to their interactions with schools. It is a very long list. And if I read it to you today, it will make you recognize the amount of it we all in this room have participated in. From book fairs to the experience of canned food drives for students who are actually going to go get that food later in the day, right? There are proms and holidays and teacher appreciation and all of these sort of what I might describe as tradition. And you can probably assume that when you use that word, you are invoking some inequities into a space. The traditions that we have that have so many access points related to socioeconomic status of students. So, you know, I think so often people associate equity work with LGBTQIA+ access and affirming education, which is absolutely critical as we talk about how we do our work as well as a race-first lens and making sure that we are looking at our disparities in our data. It also includes issues of other experiences that students have. And we are looking at a wide array of work that is deep and really long-term. And we have a long way to go, which is why the first slide said the beginning of the journey. So thanks for listening and inviting. And again, our apologies that our students are not here to speak to the impact because their voices are actually most powerful about this topic. So Oliver, we'll turn it back to you. Thank you so much.
Yes. No, no apologies needed. Please accept our apologies. We've, we've kept you, kept you late and on your, your holiday break. So, you know, we, we appreciate both Erin, you and Marlin taking the time to share your experience. I'm really curious to hear your thoughts and experience. You know, we live in polarizing times and especially, you know, you brought up in your, your presentation, you know, this, this issue of, you know, critical race theory. And how, how do we? Can you talk a little bit about, you know, any successes you've had in sort of building, understanding, getting people to sort of move away from their sort of rigid positions to sort of have a greater understanding of different perspectives?
Sure. Thank you for that question. It's a very important one. What I would say from a, a district lens is that as the director, especially given my own identities, I have tried to be in spaces where people are feeling stressed, challenged, and in strong disagreement with equity work really regularly. So, for example, I attended a, a session of about seventy people who had come together in great distress about the work and knowing and understanding that I might be a person who could engage with them and offered to meet with anyone personally who wanted to. And had people take me up on that. Do they always agree with making sure that we hold LGBTQIA+ affirming education at the center? No, there's certainly a group of people who are feeling like they should not have to engage with others that are different than them. We are a public school and it is essential that we create equity for everyone, including students and their families, who hold a whole array of different structures in their families, right? Family is not defined by one, one perspective. And so making sure that people have time and space to really talk about what that means. I do find that when people are feeling in deep disagreement around equity work and we just push that aside, that, that is a dangerous behavior, in my opinion. I think that it is critical to lean in and engage. Does that mean there's agreement in that space? No. Is it important that those of us who have sort of what I would describe as the privilege to be somewhat insulated from the harm that might come out during those conversations? Yes. And so, you know, Marlin just described affinity space for white students, for example, who are feeling a struggle with a conversation about race and making sure that they are supported in that. I really meant what I said at the beginning of this presentation, which is that this work is about love and support. And when you come from that lens and you deeply listen, I do hold lines, though, I will tell you. And here is my line. When comments or statements or beliefs are about erasure of people's selves, that's a line. The district is not going to erase people. We are going to uplift people based on who they are and based on what they need. But we are not going to support others in either as a, a community member or a family or a student or a faculty member or a staff or a leader participating in behaviors that are counterintuitive to the policy around erasure of a people, of an identity group. And so that really is sort of the line that we hold. And I talk about that with love and understanding in any space where that might be happening, trying to say like, you wouldn't want that to happen to you. You don't want your identity erased and nor should we be erasing other people's. Or make comments that are harmful or biased or potentially invoking ism, right? Ableism, racism, you know, homophobia and transphobic behaviors. These are things that get in our way in these conversations. And, you know, I, one of the things I find is that when you're in one-on-one conversations, it really helps. And so that is one of the things that we've been trying to do. We're not trying to shut anybody down. We're trying to engage. We try to create safe space for that to happen. And our policy is our policy. And we are going to uphold that policy for many reasons, including that we're not going to be harmful to any student based on, on who they are and how they show up in our schools.
Thank you. Board members, questions, comments?
I'll just say thank you. I had the privilege of being with Erin and much of this work earlier on in my leadership with the board work in Essex Westford and the incredible support from Erin and Beth. And very nice to meet you, Marlin. I don't think before I left we had the occasion. But I will just simply say, our students, this is, this is really being lived. And we have been moved and pushed and inspired by allowing there to be space for our students to bring their voice to decision-making, to the spaces to help us learn together, Essex Westford as a district. And I think, I, you mentioned early on courage for us to be vulnerable in learning from wherever our own lived experiences are. We, that was foundational for the work. So as I think about Oliver, what helps moving hard work forward, I, I invite us to think about what we need to understand more about as a state board when we move into the space of taking on EQS through an equity lens. So I, I invite all of us to sort of think about that so that Tammy and I can help support this work moving forward. But I continue to be inspired by the work that's happening around our state and the elevation of student voice that I know is happening in Essex Westford. And I'm so happy that you guys could share the story with us.
Thank you. Wonderful. Well, thanks again, Erin and Marlin. And thank you, Patrick, for helping to organize today's presentation. So the journey, as you, as you point out, it's a journey and we're at the beginning. So good.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you both. Enjoy the rest of your school vacation.
Thank you so much. Good to see everyone. Take care.
Bye bye. Thanks.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Great. So we, we only have two items remaining on the agenda. I think we can hopefully get through them quickly. So item N, discuss a tuition appeal. And then, and then we'll close with any final public comment. If we have members of the public on the board who wish to address us. So on the tuition appeal, a little bit of background. We have, some of you who were on the board last year will recall that we had four tuition appeals last year that involved some very complex issues. We hired outside counsel to assist the board. And the full board participated in the deliberations. The attorney, the outside attorney handled a lot of the, sort of the pre-hearing details. We've not had any appeals since last year until now. So we have received an appeal. The facts appear to be different from the fact pattern we saw with the appeals last year. The issues in question are not, are not particularly complex. So I did a conversation with AAG, Assistant Attorney General, Jamie Crable, who supports some education-related matters on the best way forward. And after discussing with her and talking with Jennifer Samuelson, we think the best and most efficient path forward is for the board to appoint Jennifer Samuelson as a hearing officer to hear this, this particular appeal and come back to the board with recommended, or I should say proposed, order with findings, fact, conclusions of law, et cetera. So I don't want to, and we need to be very careful that we do not, as a board, discuss at this point any of the particulars of, of the case at hand or the appeal, I should say. And I would caution board members that we are in a quasi judicial stance at this point and should not discuss this case with either party individually and with any other outside people. We need to remain very neutral on this and as it goes through the process. So we have essentially a few approaches. We can appoint a hearing officer. We can hear everything as a full board. Or we can appoint a committee to hear this on behalf of the board. But my recommendation to the board is that we appoint Jennifer to act as a, as a hearing officer and bring back a proposed order for the board's consideration. Any questions on that? Kim?
Um, so I just want to make sure that I'm aligning it with what we had done in the past. We heard it as a full board and we had an external hearing officer. And then that got distilled and came back to us from the conversation. That got distilled and our position was articulated through that attorney. And in this case, would Jennifer be acting as our attorney on it? Or I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a place in the process that we should go back to it or?
She, Jennifer would not be acting as our attorney. She would be acting as the, the hearing officer. But it so happens she, she's an attorney. So, you know, she has the requisite skills to conduct the hearing and to prepare with some assistance the, a proposed order with the findings, the fact. and to prepare with some assistance the, a proposed order with the findings, the fact and conclusions of law. But I would stress without getting into the details that the, the, the facts involved in this are and the questions at hand are quite a bit different than what we dealt with last year. Last year was a far more complex matter. Yeah, just, just to, just to summarize and without, I don't want to get in any discussion, but the appeal appears to concern based on the information that's been presented. There's a parent who wanted to send their child to a recognized school and was denied tuition on the basis that it was a recognized school. And we are being, that is, has now, is now being appealed to us and, and we're being asked to consider that appeal.
And to clarify, recognized versus approved, right? I just want to make sure I'm picking up on the nuance. Okay.
Correct. Last year involved schools that were approved.
Yep. And, and I'm presuming just knowing that in the multiple hats we all wear, Jennifer serving on the school board in a non-operating district, like the, either the area of the state or, you know, whatever else is being considered would not have any, any crossover that would be challenging to the situation. Okay, great.
Yeah. So just, so the, just the parties at, just for, for the record, the parties are Angela Eastman and this concerns her child in the Echo Valley School District. Which is somewhere up in the Williamstown sort of central part of the state, if I, if my memory is correct.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Patrick, I see you have your hand up, but I think that may have been up before. I did see your note that you have to drop at one. I think we'll be done by then. Other questions? So if everyone's comfortable with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Jennifer Samuelson as the hearing officer in the appeal concerning the matter of the, let me get this, make sure I have the right school district here. Angela Eastman and the, where is this school district? Echo Valley.
Echo Valley and Orange in Washington.
And to bring back to the board a proposed order with findings, fact and conclusions of law for the board's final consideration. Somebody care to offer that as motion? It's been moved by Tom Lovett. Is there a second?
I second it, Patrick.
It's been seconded by Patrick Brown. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of adopting a motion, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those, those opposed signify by saying no and raising your hand? Are there any abstentions? Motion appears, appears to carry unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously. You've appointed Jennifer Samuelson as the hearing officer. So Jennifer and I will notify the parties and Jennifer will work to get this appeal process kicked off. So that brings us to our final agenda item, which is to hear any, we've set aside five minutes for any public comment. So if there are any members of the public who may have missed our earlier opportunity, you're welcome to address the board at this point. I'm not hearing anybody. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved by Kim Gleason. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Tammy Colby to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
And those opposed signify by saying no, raise your hand. The motion appears to carry unanimously. It has carried unanimously. We stand in adjournment. Thank you so much for your time. Great meeting, some really hard work and good discussion. So we'll see you next month. Cheers.